Council comments or announcements? Are there any council comments or announcements? Bruce? Joy?
Yes, I just wanted to comment briefly on the Tacoma Park Arts and Humanities Day, which was here on Saturday. And I had a chance to stop in for a short while. And I only got to attend one event, but it was wonderful. It was, I'll get this right, the members of Washington National Opera's Domingo Cefriss Young Artist Program, performing popular opera arias and ensembles. And I can't say that I ever thought of myself as an opera buff, but I came in and thoroughly enjoyed what performances they put on. I would say half the audience listening to them was under ten, and they all seemed to be enjoying it as well. And my favorite one was, I won't get the name exactly right, but it was basically a duet for two cats. And it was, and it was two singers who, whose only vocalization was a meow. And it went on for a number of minutes, and it was the most fascinating conversation of cats I have ever heard. And so, I would just like to encourage everyone to put the, put on their calendars what I hope will be an annual event, and recognize that there were numerous different kinds of things, maybe ten different things going on at once. And I think it was probably one of those instances where, in the first year of anything, getting the word out and getting people to recognize that it's here can be difficult. I would imagine that we probably wanted higher attendance than we had, but I think everybody who was here was fascinated by a number of the performances. And I hope that bodes well for the quality of the things that are here and the talents that are in this community. And I would encourage everybody to be ready to come next year.
Joy?
I would also like to recognize the Arts and Humanities Day. I passed through briefly and was very impressed with how full the community center seemed and how much it seemed to realize the vision that we had for the community center of being a place where various groups could come and, and share with the folks in our neighborhoods and, and have their participation. I, I, I hope that with additional events like this, that the community will come into this center and feel that it is theirs and that they can enjoy the fruits of many years of labor. The second thing I want to state is, on the Tacoma Metro, I know that this is an agenda item coming up, but I want to make sure that the public is aware that there is, there were some things that happened on Friday that I don't think council members were fully briefed on. And I'm going to make sure that as we go forward from tonight, that the council makes it abundantly clear what we approve and what we don't approve. I'm, I'm pleased that we are finally getting to a point where we're talking openly about transit design. And I think that that's very productive. The community could use a forum for that, since Womata has not provided it. But I believe that all of that needs to be done out in the open with community participation, and that possibly we have not shown as a city that that is our goal. So, I look forward to the briefing, and I look forward to rectifying the situation we find ourselves in.
Are there any other comments? Yes, Corinne.
I just want to remind folks again that on Sunday, the 28th, there's a War II potluck at my house from five to eight o'clock. And we're having a haunted house in my, in my vacant basement. And it is, it's little kid friendly. So, that's, that's it.
Any other comments?
Several of the members of the council, including myself, attended the MML Fall Conference on Thursday and Friday last week, thanks in large part to Bruce Williams' good work on the MML Legislative Committee. There is a very strong focus at MML this year on revenue, additional revenue generators from municipalities. And they listed a whole group of them, and the MML Director and Legislative Director will be working very closely with the Legislature to make sure that the municipalities don't end up with fewer funds as a result of the state Legislature's attempts to balance their budget. And hopefully, will come up with additional revenue opportunities. And it was a, a real advantage, I think, for the, the association that represents municipalities to have such a strong statement going forward into the special session of the state Legislature, which is, people probably know, begins next week. I have one additional agenda item, which will be added to the end of the agenda. It is the, a work session discussion on wording and other issues regarding a plaque honoring former Mayor Sam Abbott, which would be placed in this building to explain why it is the Sam Abbott Citizen Center. So, that will be added to the end of the agenda. The next item is the public comment period. This would be comment on items not on the council's regular meeting agenda. And just to let people know, I, I do plan to allow a time for questions following the briefing on the Tacoma Metro site. We're going to cover basically what's happened. There's a large number of things that have happened in the last week. And Bruce and I will be covering those with the assistance of the staff. And if there's any questions following that briefing, I would be pleased to entertain those at that time. So, if you do have questions on that issue and you'd like to ask them following the briefing, that would be probably preferable from everybody's point of view and from sort of following the flow. So, are there any public comments on any items that are not on our regular meeting And I'd ask when you come forward for public comments, if you could identify yourself, and also if you could keep your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
My name is Sandy Nakamura. I live on the 7400 block of Cedar Avenue. And I'm here to comment about my, having recently acquired knowledge about the addition to Tacoma Park Elementary School, which is not just a sixteen-room addition, but includes the extension of Birch Avenue in order to put in a 100-foot bus turnaround in the hillside, as well as a forty-to-fifty park, fifty, forty-to-fifty car parking lot that will parallel East-West Highway, after the removal of the daycare center and the putting in of a, a large retaining wall. We have, we're wondering about the city, the extent to which the city has input on this project. And we're concerned about the stormwater management capacity, given the fact that we have continuing problems on our block of Cedar Avenue with water in our basements if there's a lot of rain, about just the cities, the, you know, the effect on the cityscape of Tacoma Park, and the large number of trees that will need to be removed in order to accomplish this project, as well as the increased traffic load on 410. So, the question is, will the council and the, the city have some input into this project?
I hope that we do. I understand that there's a formal task force, and I think that there will be members of the city staff on the task force. Do you have any additional updates, Joy?
On the, um...
On the question of the participation on the Tacoma Park Elementary School?
I, I don't. I'm sorry. I know the PTA is, is putting together positions by the parents, and their main concern is the relocation of kids to Grosvenor, so...
The people who, I mean, the people whose, whose properties, while they don't adjoin it, they certainly look out onto the parking lots, have not, you know, received any notification at all of this project. And so, it was really just an enormous surprise when I attended the meeting ten days ago at the school, about the, you know, about the extent of the project and the extent that it will change, you know, the way that part of the city looks, is really...
Hi, I'm Richard Levine, and I live also on the 7400 block of Cedar. I'm here also to comment on the issue of the parking lot. And the issue of tearing down a hillside, constructing a fifty-car parking lot on Philadelphia Avenue, which is a major gateway, a road right through our community, is going to affect the citizenry who live in the neighborhoods, of course, on, on Cedar, on Birch, on Holly, on Philadelphia. Everyone who uses East-West Highway, it'll change the look of our community. We were told that certain affected neighborhoods or neighbors were leafleted and given information about the, about this construction project, but our neighbors, all of them on these streets that are going to be most affected of Cedar, Birch, Holly, and Philadelphia, no one had received any flyers or information about this. They were basically stunned to hear about this. And, and they're very, very concerned about the impact on the neighborhood and on the community. And so, I hope the council seriously considers the issue, that, all the issues that Sammy brought up, and many others that I'm sure are going to occur, and trying to create such a large project which will change the look of our community and the traffic patterns, et cetera. And I think that this deserves the full attention of the council so that we can get a resolution to this situation, which is optimum.
There, there, I think you're making some good points. Perhaps the city can, and I say the city because I probably won't be part of the process at that point, but the city could facilitate some kind of a discussion between the school system and some of the folks that you've mentioned who haven't been part of the process.
Yes, and I think there's a lot of people who haven't been part of the process. I mean, once you start creating a different look at our community and creating changes in traffic patterns, it's going to affect nearby neighborhoods and neighborhoods that are throughout the entire city, so...
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. I, I agree that this does need to come to the council. It's something I've been briefing my colleagues on as I was on different, involved in different meetings and the public list that I'm sure you saw at the corner of Philadelphia and Holly. I, I went to many of those meetings. I've been consulting with the PTA folks on the relocation concerns, and I've talked with school board members. So, what, what I've brought to my colleagues is just that there are issues brewing, and this council does need to stay on top of what's going on right next door.
Well, we really would appreciate working with the council on this and involving the large number of neighbors affected.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Larry Silverman. I live at 7308 Birch Avenue. And I want to comment tonight about the stormwater. By way of my qualifications, I'm an environmental attorney, have been for more than thirty years, specializing in water resource management. I teach environmental law and policy at Johns Hopkins University at the graduate school level. I'm chairman of the Montgomery County Water Quality Advisory Group, which advises the council and the county executive on these issues. I'm a founding board member of the Anacostia Watershed Society, legislative director in the past of Clean Water Action Project. I've worked in this area most of my adult life. I have two things to say about stormwater here in Tacoma Park. One indication of a problem with stormwater is the amount of trash that gets in the streams, because most of the trash in the streams gets there through the storm sewers. And every year, the council of governments does a survey, a trash survey, to see who is the best, which neighborhoods are the best and which are the worst. Well, guess who the worst is? It's our fair city of Tacoma Park. We put more trash in the streams through our storm sewers than any other neighborhood in the Anacostia area, more than Silver Spring, more than Wheaton, more than the east side of the river, more than any, any other community, Burtonsville, Sandy Spring, the whole, the whole Anacostia watershed. And this is a consistent result, particularly from Langley Park. That's, that's an indication of a problem. There's only one. Secondly, there's a new law that the legislature, legislature passed called House Phil 1141, which calls on municipalities to rethink their planning, their zoning, their, their, their growth and development plans, with the, keeping in mind water resource management, water sewer, stormwater management, flood control. And I don't know where the city stands in this, but I would encourage you to look into this. So, the, the issue of stormwater is, it's a little bit hidden, but unlike some other very important issues that the council takes up, your ability to influence this area is very great, and your need to be involved is very great, and your responsibility is near total in this area. So, I would urge the council to, to find some way to, to, to look into this issue and find some structure where they can rethink and reexamine the entire stormwater program. And I don't mean this as criticism of the people in your Public Works Department, who I think are excellent, but an issue this fundamental and this basic really requires leadership from the elected officials.
Well, thank you. I think we should definitely have the staff look into that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I can just add that we're aware of a number of the requirements that are coming down from the federal government for increased attention to stormwater, and that we've been anticipating that the efforts that we make will need to be ramped up.
Yeah, I, I think the, the, there's a lot of public education to be done. We got a lot of good environmentalists in Tacoma Park, but I don't think they understand what happens when that water runs down the street from their, their homes and parking lots and driveways.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Jim DiLuigi. I live at 7106 13th Avenue. These initial comments, I, I've come tonight to thank the mayor for many years of service and those others who are, or may be departing. And I think much has been accomplished in the last few years, even though we've had our ups and downs on a few issues, many, many, many good things have happened. I was a little disturbed at the initial comments tonight by Councilmember Lane. I, I don't know whether that was meant to be an apology on your part...
No.
...or how certain things have transpired relative to the, to the metro situation. I'll be glad to talk about specific comments when the presentation is made, because there are many shortcomings still in what was presented. But a lot of the communications I've seen didn't seem to be copied to council, certainly weren't discussed in public, and is kind of reminiscent of what was going on back in the seventies, when we did have a change in leadership with Mayor Abbott coming on board. So, you know, it's quite disappointing to see what's happened in the past few days relative to this action. And I hope some discipline or action is taken if necessary, and I think some explanations are needed. But putting that aside, I do thank the mayor. I do thank everybody that's participated. It does take a lot of time on your part. I don't think many people actually recognize how much time it does take and how complicated it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
My name is Sabrina Baron. I'm the president of Historic Tacoma, and I want to talk about a couple of things. I'd like to thank Chief Rakucci and the Police Department for their help on Sunday with the Fall Festival that Historic Tacoma had at the Thomas Ziegler Carriage House property. The chief helped us with some parking issues, and we appreciate his, his attention to that. And I'd also like to thank Daryl Brathwaite, the Director of Public Works Department, and Mike Welsh, the City Gardener, for the work that they did on the grounds over there and with trash pickup and so on and so forth, to help us out with, with the festival over there. They're really great. They're very responsive. We really appreciate all they, all they do. So, thank you very much. The other thing I'd like to do is I would like to support the concerns of the neighbors from Cedar and Birch about the proposed plans for the expansion of the elementary school. I saw those plans for the first time a few weeks ago at a meeting that was sponsored by the Old Town Residents Association, where someone from the county school system planning department came to talk about those plans. And I was also very concerned about the proposal for this bus entrance in and off of Philadelphia. If anybody's ever driven that at peak traffic times, it's a challenge as it is. And I also share the concerns about the parking lot of a significant size that's going to be right there on Philadelphia also. And I think that's definitely part of the plan that needs a lot of attention and that needs a lot of good thought as to what the needs of the community really are there and whether or not the current proposal is, is practical. It was also a little disconcerting to have the official who was at that meeting from the county, you know, constantly say, "Well, we haven't got that far yet. We haven't got that far yet." We have that part of a plan on paper that we're being shown already. And I, I have a lot of experience with these kinds of projects, and we can just look at this, this metro project as an example of how, once something gets down on paper, we have to be very, very concerned about it. So, I'd like to echo those concerns that, that we keep an eye on that. And I hope I do have question, time to ask questions about the Womata project later, but I just want to encourage the council to keep their focus on doing whatever is possible to try to stop or at least delay the vote on Thursday on the sale of this property. If that means going to the governor and the highest levels of administration, then I strongly encourage you to do that. What's being proposed at this site is wrong for that site. It's wrong for this community. There's been a lot of blood, sweat, tears, money, you name it, that has gone into fighting this over the years. And I would really hate to see us kind of throw up our hands and say the sky is falling at the last minute and back off of continuing to take very, very strong action on this metro issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
This is Lorraine Pierce on with Historic Tacoma, echoing what Sabrina says. And I also want to say Historic Tacoma will work with the neighbors on Philadelphia and Birch, with this, our other neighbors on Holly and the school system, which I think is not going to be an easy task to find a good resolution of this problem. We are very, very concerned with plans that we've seen. It was very lopsided stakeholder involvement, and I think maybe a good thing that could come out of this is we could devise a way in which city staff could ensure that the appropriate people are being reached. And as a kind of a failsafe measure, maybe we could put our heads together with Barb and figure out a way in which we make sure folks are not surprised by this, even if the school system is saying they fired folks, which they indeed did. And now we're finding out that's not the case. So, lots of stuff to do, and Historic Tacoma is very interested in working with folks to find a good solution. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments? Any other comments at the public comment period? All right. If there aren't any, we go on to the city manager's update.
Just a few brief items this evening. I wanted to let the council know that the repairs to the Maple Avenue Bridge sidewalk are progressing well, and we're cautiously optimistic that the sidewalk will be reopened during the first week of November, if not earlier. Also wanted to just let the council know that I got an email late last week from the company doing our resident survey. They are just kind of putting the finishing touches in terms of data collection, which was scheduled to end last Friday, and it looks like we'll have a survey response rate of at least 35 percent. And they're still basically telling the surveys that have come in. The last thing I wanted to do is ask Chief Rakucci to step forward. And obviously, there's been some, a recent increase in the number of street robberies. Certainly, we as a staff are concerned about that, and I'm sure the community is as well. And I'd like to have the chief maybe report on what the department is doing to address these matters.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. When I came on board eight months ago, I told you I'd keep you informed when a pattern occurs or there's a crime spree, or whatever you want to call it occurring in our community. We've been having a series of armed robberies on both sides of the city, most of them occurring on the side closest to metro over the last two months. Over the last two months since August 24th, we've had fourteen robberies here in the city, mainly either street robbery, well, they're all street robberies, either a strong arm or no guns displayed, or an armed robbery where weapon is displayed. Of the fourteen robberies, eleven of them were on the, what I call, the metro side, and the other three were on the other side, which we call the Langley Park side. There have been four in the last two weeks, although we've been monitoring them, and our plainclothes unit has been out there. With the two that occurred, the three that occurred this week, I've met with staff, and we began a detail, which is above what we normally put on the street. There will be six additional officers working in a plainclothes and a uniform in a target area, starting tomorrow night, looking at robberies. We'll be concentrating in the area of metro. We have contacted metro police. They'll be working with us. We're working with the fourth district detectives and our detectives. The whole purpose will be to, with both foot, mobile patrol, plainclothes cars, uniform officers, saturate the area in an effort to try to apprehend some of these robbers. To give an example, we had a robbery Saturday night at Tulip and Maple, where we determined the vehicle was a stolen vehicle from DC. Vehicle was used earlier in the evening in the Alny area, and then came down into, where there was a robbery, and then came down into Tacoma Park, where two of our citizens were robbed. We were able to get behind the vehicle, take it into the District of Columbia, at which time, we were unable to get assistance, and the vehicle sped off and away. And in the best interest of safety for our officers and for the citizens, we terminated the chase. Well, wasn't the chase. We terminated our, we tried to stationary surveil the vehicle. It's important that the citizens continue to call us with information on suspect vehicles. It's important for the community to be safe, to take safety precautions. One of the things I've learned in doing some histories with Ed Corsi, who's been here for quite a while, is with daylight savings time increases our chances for robbery in the area down there. So, we, I want the people to know when they get off metro at night, that they walk their neighborhood at night, they're going to be safe. We're going to have extra officers out there. We just need the help of everyone in the community who I know carries cell phones. If they see anything, don't even think about it. Just call and let us determine whether it's suspicious or not. It's important that we get our citizens calling us, because that's obviously our best information alone. But we have increased patrols, which brings up the second thing, which is next Wednesday night is Halloween, and I want parents to know that we will have a total of ten additional officers on the street. We'll have plainclothes officers on the street. I want parents to feel that it is safe in our community to go out and go trick-or-treating, and that we'll be looking out for our kids. We want to keep it safe. So, we will be increasing on that night to make sure it's safe. With the bad news, I, I want people to know there is good news, that it'll be safe to go out trick-or-treating. And we ask you to follow some of the rules. Make sure that you go out with your kids, have flashlights, be careful, have them walk in groups, be careful of loose candy that's not in a regular retail package. And we want everyone to enjoy Halloween. It's the time for children and for our families to come together in community, and we want it to be a safe community. I will continue to update you on what we do with the robbery detail, and hopefully, I'll have some success to report in the next few days. Thank you.
Chief, do you want to let people know what telephone number they should use if they're calling from a cellphone, since you mentioned that?
We always get this debate. If it's an emergency, 911. If it's a suspicious vehicle, call 270-1100. Obviously, that's right into our dispatch center, and it goes out a little bit quicker sometimes in the 911 call, which has to be transferred over to us. There's a little bit, but when it calls us directly, we can get on it, and we'll get the officers out. Our dispatchers are aware of the detail and what's taking place, and they're going to quickly dispatch a car into the target area that we'll be looking at over the next few weeks.
Thank you. I very much appreciate you bringing this to us on a proactive basis. And you're right, we have noticed this when the time changes and it starts getting dark earlier. And I very much appreciate your getting out there and as soon as you notice the robbery's increasing and acting on it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mayor, I wondered if I just, Chief, I would just encourage you that if there's anything you can think of that this council can do to improve the cross-jurisdictional cooperation with the District of Columbia Police, please let us know.
Cross jurisdiction, it's working really well. I mean, Montgomery County's been great assistance to us. We're really trying to get metro more, more involved down at the metro station, and they've agreed to work with us on this detail, so I'm real pleased by that. Thank you.
Is there anything else? Okay. The next item on the agenda, as probably a number of people know, the, the board of the, of Womata is planning to take up the issue of the Tacoma Metro Station next Thursday at their regular board meeting. The council is trying to keep on top of what's going on, and we also want to let you all know what's going on to the extent that we know it. Within the last week, there have been a number of things that have happened, and several of us, myself, Councilmember Williams, Suzanne Ludlow, and the city attorney, Sue Silver, also met with the chair of the Womata Board this morning. And there's a great deal of information which I'm going to turn to Bruce to sort of go through.
Okay. Let me just back up for a second to one item that I want to mention first, which is to remind everybody that the, there was a great deal of information submitted by the city, by residents, by various political office holders in the region, in response to the Womata staff report, where everybody was submitting their comments by October 5th. There, the city submitted a binder of information at that point that was, I don't know, an inch and a half or two-inch binder with copies for each individual board member, that a lot of people put a lot of work into their efforts to make their comments known to Womata about the process, about the staff report, about everything we've gotten to, to the point now, two weeks ago. I would say that it was our expectation in submitting all of those comments, as I'm sure it was all of yours, that those comments would be distributed to the board members and that there would be some consideration of those comments. And I would say that one of the first surprises in meeting with the... And I would say that one of the first surprises in meeting with Elizabeth Hewlett this morning was that she was surprised that we were coming to her, talking about any information. Her feeling was, oh geez, this is all new information. And isn't this too late for this information? There was a deadline of the 5th, and we said, oh, but we submitted all that information. And she said, well, I never saw it. And we've had that same reaction from the other primary Maryland board member, Peter Benjamin, that they had not seen anything. And so therefore, anything that we were talking to them about was new information, which was, I would have to say, a great disappointment to us, that we had assumed all along that the careful comments that we and others had submitted in great detail, in great length, had been considered by somebody. And my sense from that meeting this morning is that they were considered by Womata Staff, but that nobody had seen them up to the point when we were meeting this morning, the board had still not seen any of that. I gather that the amount of information that the board will get in their packet for their meeting this Thursday was going to be delivered to them today. I know that it went up on the Womata website, I would gather, today, maybe a little earlier than today, but I think some people saw it for the first time today. And there's a great deal of information on that site. But the problem is that by the way they've set up the meeting on Thursday, this whole question is on what amounts to the board's consent agenda. They call it their administrative actions, but that functions as their consent agenda. So board members will be getting what I would assume would be a large, thick stack of information, including all the public comments, stapled behind a cover sheet that essentially says this is one of eight or nine consent agenda items. It's not going to be discussed. It's not going to be talked about. And so essentially, you don't need to look at all this stuff. So that all of the effort that we've put in will probably never be seen by the Womata Board members. It was a great surprise to us that it was going to be a consent agenda item without any discussion by the board. We knew that they had initially, that the request by County Executive Ike Leggett to address concerns about access to transit, which had always been our point that we were always trying to make, that he had supported that in his letter as part of that October 5th deadline submission, and that it would seem that the Womata Staff recognized that they might have to deal with some of his requests. And any efforts that we were making were to try and support his request and to provide any information that might help to address the concerns that he had raised. The difficulty in getting any one of the board members to pull the item off of the consent agenda gets back to the way the Womata Board functions and the deference that they show to what are seen to be as local issues. In this case, the District of Columbia is continuing to assert that this is purely a local issue, that it is the district, in the district, that it's the district's concern, and they want this to go forward. And the other jurisdictions just need to get with the program, move this forward, not revisit any of it, even if the people are new, that boards don't operate that way. Just because new people come on, you don't go back and revisit anything. We had a lengthy discussion with Ms. Hewlett. We were scheduled for what amounted to a half hour. We ended up talking with her for an hour and a half. I think she was very receptive to hearing what we had to say, very concerned that any of the submissions that we had made had not made their way to the board members. And I would say that there is a sense that the, that the, what the Womata Board thinks we're all talking about is just saying no to any development, stop the whole process, just make it go away. And that they, they never did really hear the message that the city has always been trying to convey, which is it's all about access to transit. That's the points that we went over with Ms. Hewlett this morning. She encouraged us to try and get input, in many ways, the avenue left to us, which is to try and comment to the board directly at the beginning of the board meeting, when they have public comment, to give that message, to say, it's not that we're against development, it's that we're worried about access to transit. We might want to consider ways to do that. I came away encouraged that she was receptive to what we had to say, but on the other hand, realistic that in all likelihood, this item will go forward on Thursday, that it will stay on the consent agenda, and that the Womata Board will in fact consummate this deal, sign this contract with EYA, and go forward with selling land, which will in the end consign access to transit for us, our children and our grandchildren, to an inferior design that will be very hard to undo. 80% of the people who use the Tacoma Metro come from Maryland. 41% of them arrive on foot. And it's going to be very, much more dangerous than the current plan, than the current existing station, if they go forward with this. And I'm disappointed that they don't seem to have the capacity to plan better and to run a public process that allows for considered and thoughtful input by the public that they serve to try and make it so that when they make a proposal like this, that they come up with a better product rather than worse. And I'll stop there.
Suzanne? The brief overview that you've given, I think perhaps underestimates the stunning feeling that I have, the stunned feeling that I have in working with Womata on this project, or trying to work with them for all this time, thinking that we were putting forward constructive criticism, identifying things that would make transit work, and finding that it's been ignored completely, year after year after year. The Tacoma Park City Council's been on record since April of 2002 with resolutions expressing concern over transit access at the Tacoma Metro Station. We have made multiple requests to Womata to study what transit facilities would be needed in the future to accommodate our transit users and to make sure that the adequate land was retained after any decision was made on a joint development project. Repeatedly, the requests have been ignored. We've learned over time that Womata doesn't have staff capable of designing transit facilities, and they don't have, haven't had an interest in hiring people to do that. They rely on developers to do that work for them. We've spent many hours, over eight years, identifying, analyzing these problems, specifying them in detail, paying, helping pay for the DC Tacoma Park Tacoma Transportation Study that identified how many bus phase are needed at the site, hiring the firm Nelson Nygaard to analyze the transit facilities in advance of the compact hearing, looking at, you know, what would be the functionality of that, of those transit facilities in the EYA development plan. As you mentioned, you know, Tacoma Park came out in full force, testifying at the compact hearing. We presented a binder of information. The council, the Womata Board members apparently did not receive that information. The two Womata Board members that were at the compact hearing are no longer on the Womata Board. So there's a deep gap in that understanding. In the discussions that I've had with various officials over the past two weeks, people have thought that, as you mentioned, Tacoma Park's just against development, and there's no reason to look at this, it's just a delaying tactic, and no, even, not even a concept that we were trying to address, what transit facilities are needed at the site. It didn't, it's, it, there was a wall that it didn't get passed. And it's, it's been particularly frustrating. On October 4th, the county executive sent a letter indicating his concern over a number of the transit safety issues at the site. They wanted to see if there could be a design for transit facilities that would work for the Tacoma Metro, because obviously, it wasn't getting prepared by anybody. We retained Nelson Nygaard to prepare transit designs for the site, meeting the criteria that we've been specifying over and over again in our statements. 12 bus phase, safe access for handicapped, safe pedestrian access, safe bike access, a attractive gateway to the Tacoma community, 50-foot buffer from the apartment building on Eastern. All the things that, 150 parking spaces at the site for short-term parking. They came back to us with three different transit arrangements in concept form. We sat down with ride-on officials and the Nelson Nygaard staff, part of it was a conference call, and went through those. It was a fairly lengthy meeting, couple hours. And one of the plans did work well for transit, meeting the needs that ride-on had, addressing the concerns of pedestrian, safety, handicap accessibility, all of those kinds of things. We then instructed Nelson Nygaard to continue to refine the plan because it needed to show the width, the sidewalks, and that kind of thing. And they've done that. We now have the plan. It's sometimes referred to as Option A. And one of the things, I guess I'd like to take just a moment, is to go through what this transit plan does in terms of answering the issues that we've raised for transit. And it's helpful, I did put up in the, in the site literature rack, this diagram, which is one of the versions of the EYA plan, so it's easier to compare. And there's a variety of things that are important. The most notable thing I'll start with first is that the Nelson Nygaard Transit Plan eliminates the bus-car traffic circle that is so problematic, so hazardous in the center of the site. It also, the Nelson Nygaard Plan also is easy to understand. You can show up at this site and figure, see where you want to go, easily drive where you need to go, not have to drive in circles looking for parking. And the, the advantages that this have to making a good, safe transit facility are innumerable. There's a couple things I'd like to go through. The EYA Plan cuts the slope that goes parallel to the tracks in half, making it essentially a retaining wall that people will need to walk on a narrow sidewalk next to. We know what it's like on Blair Road, walking where that, where you've got the wall that divides a community, it would have a similar feel. At the main entrance, it reduces, the EYA Plan reduced the plaza entry area tremendously. It does two things. One is it makes a very congested site, but it keeps an area so that it's sloped, and it ends up making it more difficult for people who have mobility issues. We have an entire comparison of the two plans here, but I want to highlight a couple more things. In the EYA Plan, the bus phase, first of all, there's only 10 bus phases. We've determined, and determined, and determined that 12 bus phases are needed. The Plan also puts a layover spot down the middle median. Does two things. One is, those layover spaces will never be accessible to the public to be used as bus phase when future need calls. But it also makes that bus area very wide. It makes it longer to cross. It adds an awful lot of pavement right at that location. In the Nelson Nygaard Plan, it's a narrower area for buses. It sets the bus phase back away from the crosswalks. It does provide 12 bus phase with a turnaround in the first floor of a parking garage at the, at the end of the property, the northern end. The, there could be a canopy that connects the people who get dropped off to the elevator, making it a much more convenient location to drop people off. In subsequent discussions with Nelson Nygaard's staff, they feel that that, that area there actually can be narrowed so that the walkway from where a drop-off would take place to the elevator could be shortened. But this, that's something that came up after this got printed. But it's still much better than the EYA Plan. All of the pedestrian ways into the site are wider, more welcoming, with more direct views to the elevator tunnel, to the main entrance. There's very, a nice approach to dealing with bicycles. There is a proposal to put in a bike station, where you have a building where everybody can go and, and store your bikes. Union Station apparently has a, has a nice one, or it's proposed. The advantage of that also is that a person riding a bike can go around the property and go fairly directly to the bike station, minimizing interactions with too many of pedestrians. In the EYA Plan, it's very congested and the bicyclists need to wind their way through very narrow sidewalks with pedestrians. The, for disabled patrons, one of the things that we were not able to do was to have a drop-off right at the elevator entrance. And there was a lot of discussion about how does, how does this get accomplished? In that vein, they do have a direct, a way to drop off at the Kiss and Ride and go into the elevator in a straight shot. But one of the points that the ride-on officials made was that they also like to have the bus phase close to the, to the two entrances for those people with mobility problems that ride the bus. That having bus phase at a great distance from the entrances is a problem at a number of their stations. And it's something that in a better design, they would like to see addressed. As I mentioned, the vehicular circulation on-site is much improved. Buses stick to themselves, cars come in and circle on a public road and, and exit the site. There's a short distance for the 10% of ride-on buses that need access to Eastern Avenue, they can go into the, into the small, short stretch that connects with Eastern Avenue along with cars. The overall effect of this plan is to have a much more comfortable and safe transit center that accomplishes the 12 bus phase, and it accomplishes an opportunity to have 150 parking spaces for short-term and on this site. Then I'm sure there are many other ways to accomplish the transit plans, but this one in particular is very efficient and well-functioning, and it keeps the amount of land to a minimum. One of the issues that we wanted to be prepared to deal with was, is there going to be land left for development? And we tried to, we tried to provide room for development. We did cut it down. We did cut it down from what the EYA plan has. Nevertheless, what we wanted to make sure that we had was something that we could put in front of people who are dead-set on approving the EYA plan on Thursday and say, "Oh, somebody does care about transit and it could function here." I will say it's been a tough couple of weeks thinking about this and how this functions. It's not to endorse any development plan. It is to make sure that there's a transit plan designed by transit planners that functions because nobody else is designing a transit plan. As a, as a planning professional in my past history, I normally expect that when you point out that there are problems with a site plan, problems with a design, that they actually show this to experts and get it to fix. Or they come back, there's been no, no approach, no intention of doing this. And I, as, as an optimistic person normally, I think I've been really quite shaken that all of the work that we've been doing has been ignored. What's also interesting to me is that the folks who you would think would care about transit, the various folks at Wamata, they, they feel like they're resigned to whatever they get. They feel like they just have to deal with whatever's given to them, as opposed to making a transit design that works and that will actually be financially wise for Wamata in the long run. One of the things that is important that's been brought up is that there'd been criticism in the past about the idea of having a, a three-level parking garage and the cost of that, and that that raises the price of this whole, of a project that we've been recommending. We noticed on the recommendation for the consent agenda item for Thursday, the staff recommendation now for a parking garage to hold one hundred and twenty-one parking, park, Frankly, given the fact that they are using half of their first level for a little handicap loop that's not in a very good location, that means they're going to three stories. And so that, so there is a wash on that. There hasn't been budgeted, and one of the things that I realized in talking with officials when we looked at our financials, our financial review, is that the cost of building a retaining wall for the full length along the tracks really hasn't been, hasn't been budgeted for. In discussing this with various state officials, they thought that that was an important component, that that would be a costly element of the EYA proposal. So I just wanted to go over, first of all, I guess I wanted to say that in, in looking at this, I wanted to know myself, is there a way to make transit work on this site? Every time I spoke with folks at Wamata, or kind of through people to speak with folks at Wamata, the word, the word would come back, "The EYA plan works. The EYA plan works. It, it works for transit. Every other plan we've seen doesn't work, this, the EYA plan works." We knew it did not work, and, and to be continually told that, "No, the EYA plan works," is very frustrating. So we have now shown that there is a very reasonable alternative that works for transit. I'd also like to mention that in terms of what's being proposed on Thursday, is a sale of a certain size and configuration of land that will mean that transit will not work on the site. And it, and with the Nelson Nygaard Plan, it's not much more land that needs to be retained for transit for a plan that works. I think, as I was looking at the comparisons, it, it really doesn't take much to get us away from the transit circle. Because they have the wide bus bays, they're using this in an unwise way, a different, more efficient design, doesn't take up much more land, but it makes a world of difference for us, the users, so.
If I can just add a couple more points that I've been thinking about that I didn't quite hit on. One of the other, one of the things that we also did in today's meeting was that we talked about other plans that people have been talking about and made it clear that there is more than one way to skin this cat, and that there have been other people who have ideas who have submitted them, and the board hasn't seen those, will probably never see those. Just as the board will probably never see the Nelson Nygaard Plan that the city put together.
Paid for.
Paid for. And so that, all of the effort for, by a number of people is essentially ready to be for naught. The, the various elected officials who, a number of us have persuaded to weigh in on this, the District Twenty delegation, various county council members, Representative Chris Van Hollen, all of those letters have gone in as part of the process for the November fifth, for the October fifth deadline. They are part of the packet that has been put together and is on the website and is, we assume, going as part of the written piece for the board members' packets, that huge voluminous thing. In looking at how it's been organized on the website this afternoon, it's obvious that there is no differentiation for any of those letters. The staff at Wamata saw them, but they just go in like anybody's public comment. It's all mixed in. Anybody who was looking for anything in particular would have to look under V for Van Hollen to find it, except they do things like file that under H. In the, in, in this particular instance, it is under V. Some of the other comments, as I went through looking today on the website for people who had made submittals, it was under their first name, not their last name. It's all just jumbled together. So that any of the impact that we were hoping to have with elected officials weighing in saying, "This is important, you need to maintain access to transit," that's all just mixed in among the, what'd she say, four thousand comments?
And she, and one of the things that she mentioned was that the paper copies that they were distributing of some of the information, in order to save space, they've reduced the print and put two pages per page, so that you have very little tiny fonts, and that's what they're passing out.
So even if you want to read it, you can, unless you've got a big magnifying glass. The, two other quick points. The, the major thing that's on the agenda for Thursday is the board discussion of raising fares. That's what's, that's what's got everybody's attention, that's what they're focused on, and my estimation is that the board members are, are not going to be looking at a huge amount of stuff on what is being billed as a consent agenda item that is essentially old business and that is a deference to a local jurisdiction issue, the way the Wamata Board operates. If you, once you start to get into messing with what's seen as other people's issues, then they say, "Well, if that's going to be the case, we're going to mess with yours." And with the discussion on the board Thursday on the fare increase, we know that there are jurisdictional issues, differences about how that should be addressed. Any, my sense is, any action to pull it off the consent agenda is just going to open up the wounds that are ready to be opened with the item on the fare increases. And so I just, I just want to wrap up my comments at this point by saying that I think the city has continued to push what we have always pushed, which is, we're all about access to transit. But I think that message is not getting through to the people who need to hear it most, which is the Wamata Board.
So did you have anything more to add?
Would it be possible to wait until I hear the comments and then wrap up at the end?
I, I wanted to, following all this information, I know this is a lot to sort of throw out there all at one time, wanted to give people an opportunity to ask questions. I would really encourage you to sort of ask questions and, and I think everybody feels pretty much the same way, that we are very disappointed and discouraged at this point. But I, I would really encourage you to, to talk about, to ask questions and, and say things that we can give you some information on. I think that would be most helpful. Is there anybody who has a question? I think if you want to just sort of line up behind the podium, maybe we can do it that way.
My name's Jim DiLuigi. A few weeks ago, I gave the Silver an outline of why there are ADA violations in this proposed plan by EYA. The same violations, or some of those same violations are in the plan the city just developed. In, in short, try to, and I'll give you a copy of this three-and-a-half-page document. Apparently, maybe you didn't get it. First of all, Wamata's not meeting its own obligations under ADA, in my opinion. They're not providing efficient, user-friendly services. They're not ensuring parking access is maintained or improved. These are statements in their FY two thousand and seven budget. They're not meeting federal, state, or local guidelines. They're not providing freedom of mobility to people with disabilities. That's clear in the parking. That's clear in the parking of EYA designs. That's clear in the parking program that the city is providing. They aren't encouraging migration of paratransit patrons to accessible metro rail or metro bus. People who are disabled who will drive will not park in this garage in either of these plans to get, to, to get to the transit system. It's just ineffective, it's inefficient, people cannot travel more than approximately a hundred feet. Both of these plans fail miserably. I don't understand why we spent twenty thousand dollars developing something that's non-responsive. Wamata is required, is required to meet a higher standard than simply the ADA. They're doing a remodeling project. Their obligation is to provide transit in an integrated fashion. Both of these plans separate that transit, that transit process for people with disabilities. At the very least, there should be a new elevator, elevator access installed at the main entryway. These are just a couple of ideas here, a couple of reasons why this plan fails. I would urge you not to give up. I think there's certainly legal basis, at least on, from ADA basis, of stopping this plan. We have people in the city who are disabled, people who are coming from the towers and other places who are disabled, they are users, and we have every right to bring suit against this project. I'm glad to give you this.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Jeff Blum from Cedar Avenue. And I apologize, we came in late, so maybe you answer this, but two questions. First, what is the nature of a consent calendar? Does every member of the board have to let it go through, or can any one member say, "No, we have to wait for a future discussion"?
Generally, with consent calendars, a member can pull it off the consent agenda. I'm not sure what their, what their rules are, but that's generally the way consent calendars work.
And so my follow-up question is, specifically, Mr. Linton and Mr. Benjamin, have they told somebody, either one of you or somebody else, that they will not do that? Or have they not committed one way or the other? Are they the only two who are Arrow representatives officially?
No, there, there are two voting representatives from Maryland. Elizabeth Hewlett, who is a Prince Georgean representative, and Peter Benjamin, who represents Montgomery County.
And what's Gordon Linton?
Although they're both, they're both named by the governor, but there's one from each county. Gordon Linton is an alternate. There are actually four people, but only two of them have votes. The alternates vote when the prime, the primary person is not there.
And so has, so Peter Benjamin is more sort of Arrow's because he's Montgomery County?
Yes.
So has he taken a public position that he won't delay this? And what happened to the letter that the county executive, I guess, wrote that said there are these specific problems that they want addressed?
My, my understanding, because I did ask Peter Benjamin that question, and he said that when he got the letter from the county executive, he went to the Wamata staff and said, "You need to respond to these concerns, or I'm not going to be comfortable with it." I believe that Elizabeth Hewlett basically said the same thing, that she had sort of tried to follow up with him about those concerns. As far as I know, that there has been no response back from the staff. So that's, that's an open issue. I guess the concern that I would have, following up on some of the concerns that Bruce outlined, concern that I would have is that rather than giving sort of specific fixes for some of the things that, that the county executive has quite rightly identified as being major problems, that there will be simply a promise to have it dealt with in the future.
But at this point, Peter Benjamin or Elizabeth Hewlett have not said that they won't insist on fut, on further delay on this, but they haven't said that they would either?
We, we have, I think, just identified that it was on the administrative agenda today, and we got a chance to talk to Elizabeth Hewlett, have not yet had a chance to talk to Peter Benjamin about it.
And if I, if I can just, let me just read one little six-line paragraph from Wamata's website today, which is what they see as their answer to County Executive Ike Leggett's request. It says, "There are three other sources of comment that deserve particular responses. Due to questions raised by County Executive Isaiah Leggett, staff has concluded that adding pedestrian crossing signals to the planned traffic signal at the entrance to the bus station would enhance pedestrian access to the station, as would an additional crosswalk just west of the bus entrance. Staff has also committed to an intensive review of signage when sign plans are produced to inform both drivers and pedestrians of the proper drop-off locations and pedestrian crossings." So my sense is that Wamata staff says we've addressed these concerns.
So I guess my, just my final thing is not exactly a question, but does the alternate have any, you know, sort of in the politics of this, do they have any sort of impact, or if Hewlett and Benjamin are going to go, or sort of Linton and the other person kind of irrelevant? And do we know if they're actually going to go?
The dynamics of what's going to happen on Thursday are still not completely clear. That's one of the things that we are trying to nail down. Who's going to be there? And we don't know that yet.
I think it's likely that the principals will be there on Thursday because of the fair discussion.
Well, I just want to make an offer that I have a twenty-year-old relationship with Gordon Linton from when he was a state rep in Pennsylvania, and he was the chair of my campaign for State Senate. So if you want me to call him, somebody give me his number, I'll be happy to call.
Yes, I, 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 I can think that something like that could only help.
So if somebody would give me his number, and actually I have a ten-year-old relationship with Peter Benjamin, it's, oh, but I'll, I'll call him if somebody gives me the phone number.
I think this is a perfect example of what's happening right now. We're down to the last few days of our activities and our strategizing, and frankly, anybody's help that's offered would be appreciated. We keep changing our strategy as we learn new things, not only every day, but probably every hour. A lot of things are unfolding at a very quick pace right now, so that, that's very helpful and appreciated, and we have some other ideas that we're, we're working on.
Yeah. Chris.
Hi, my name's Christine Simpson. I live on Cedar Avenue. And one question I had was, have we confirmed that the jurisdictional veto, like if two of the Maryland members vote against this, that it will not, in fact, you know, defeat the vote to pass the EYA plan? Because, you know, Susan is at...
We have done research on that question and actually have a different strategy in mind because of the parameters that affect the jurisdictional veto. I could go into it more, but I think probably better to talk together later.
Okay. I, I guess what I'm wondering is, are we happy if we get the two Maryland votes, or is it still just not going to? It's too complicated to say that the two Maryland votes, voting against the EYA plan, will that be sufficient to route the EYA proposal or not? I don't know if that's a simple question.
I don't think it will be. I think that, that they just need three votes.
Gotcha, okay. I just want to make a couple of comments. First, I was, I appreciate your attending the meeting today with Elizabeth Hewlett. I, I do think it's premature to promote any particular alternative at this point for anything different than what's proposed down there. I think we've had a unified voice here in this community. It's hard to find agreement, but I think we found it. And there's a single message there, and that is that on Thursday, the Wamata Board should vote to reject the EYA plan. If they can't do that, they should vote to delay consideration of it. And I think that, I urge you not to be distracted by alternatives at this point. They, we do have to come up with them, we do have to discuss them, but I just wouldn't do it before Thursday. So I, I ask you to try to, to hold off on that, on going in that direction. I also encourage you not to... I also encourage you not to be too negative. It sounds like it was a discouraging meeting, and I, but I know that a lot of people who are not in this room tonight are working very hard for us to try to, like, make contacts, important people, who are trying to reach Ms. Hewlett and Mr. Benjamin. And I know that Governor O'Malley is going to be at the Tacoma Park Middle School on Wednesday night. That's the night before the Thursday meeting. He's giving a speech, I think. It's not exactly a town hall meeting, but I encourage people to go out there. And we'll have, you know, we'll have papers or buttons, and we're going to see if we can get some time with him there, but it's, he should know about the issue by the time he gets to that meeting. It'll be helpful for him to see people there who are interested. So don't give up yet. And even if we only do get those two Maryland votes, which I think there's a candle of possibility that we might, I think it'll be noted by the Federal Transit Administration, even if we lose the vote at Womata, I think it'll be noted that the Maryland, the two Maryland members voted against it, if in fact they do. That's not nothing. I hope we can get more, maybe we will, but I just urge you not to give up now, to focus on the message, not on any alternatives. Thank you.
And I agree with you that we should not give up. I wouldn't disagree with the picture that Bruce is painting, but I also agree with you that I think we need to keep working. And I know that a number of us are continuing to contact people and trying to get through to people and sort of let them know that we continue to have concerns. And I really appreciate that you all are continuing to do that, too. Thank you.
Seth Prime, 7300 Willow Avenue. There are a lot of comments that I and other residents can make. You have heard or read some of them directly, and I will rehash them. One concern I have, that I have seen strong evidence of improvement in the last day, is that the council is, must be, in charge of the city's outreach to elected and appointed officials, not necessarily the staff, to elected and appointed officials. That's why I'm very glad, Councilmember Williams, that you were able to attend the meeting with Board Chair Hewlett. And I want to be sure that any further strategizing that goes on in the city is done with the full knowledge and the full agreement, the consensus agreement, on steps to be taken by the council, and that the council takes the lead, again, on any interface with elected officials and members of the Womata Board. That didn't happen last week, to the best of my knowledge. Some of that knowledge provided through inside channels. I want to make sure that that's going to happen going forward, the next week and beyond that. Secondly, I would like to know what participation council members do expect to have in the Womata Board meeting, even if only as attendees who are making comments.
As far as I know, I don't believe that there's been staff contact with elected officials. I think we're pretty much doing that.
Indications were that discussions that were held in closed session at last week's council meeting led to city actions that were not representative of any kind of council vote. I would very much like to see that not happen again, as I'm sure you would all as well, and that some of those actions taken might have been accelerated by people who are not elected representatives and therefore directly accountable to the public in elections, even if they're mostly untested. In any case, people taking, making interpretations of what the council might have decided that were not warranted by actual members of the council decisions. I'm sorry I'm being so oblique here. I hope you're reading between the lines. I think you've heard my message, and you don't necessarily need to respond.
Yes, I understand what you're saying.
I would ask the second part again, though, whether any individual council members plan to attend the Womata Board meeting, even if only to make a public comment.
I am planning to.
Seth, my assumption is I am as well.
All right, thank you.
I'm Mari Robin at 7306 Maple Avenue. I too want to echo what Chris said about not giving up the fight at present. We have a few days to hopefully get to O'Malley. He seems to be the one person who, as Kathy has mentioned before, Peter Benjamin mentioned, was the person who could corral him into voting against the EYA plan. If that is our handle at present, I'm hoping that you all will take full advantage to do that, and I guess I'd like to hear from you all what you are planning to do between now and Wednesday evening as a council. Is it only a couple of you, or is the entire council going to work on this? Staff, how's it going to be allocated? What are you hoping to?
Mari, I'll tell you, I'm a little bit uncomfortable sort of outlining our lobbying strategy. I'd be happy to talk to you after the meeting, but I'm not sure if this is the right place to sort of outline our lobbying strategy.
Well, I'm just curious if it's going to be just a couple of people, or if you're really going to get behind it and try to stop this, and use all the contacts that each of you have to try to bring this to bear.
I think that's a really good, a really good point.
And I must say, I had shaken off a lot of my frustration over the weekend, but I find it rising again when I find out after eight years, we're still, we're just now learning how this staff operates. And I would think it would be helpful in the future, when we're up against something like this, that we try to improve the record of working in concert with the community. We were surprised to see this plan had been submitted, and it's even more surprising that one of the problems that we found with the EYA plan was that there was no public input, and for our own city to essentially submit a plan that also had no public input. I must say, and just not to get down to too many brass tacks, but we use the kiss-and-ride. And so I just looked at the kiss-and-ride in the plan, the Nelson Plan, and my husband referred to it as the kiss-and-dodge, because he's going to have to dodge the buses getting into the tunnel. So, you know, those kinds of things, you know, while they're humorous, you know, they're very obvious to those of us who use the kiss-and-ride. So I would just stress once again that we don't have horns, that we're all working toward, I hope, the same conclusion, and that in the future, you'll, you know, give us the credit that maybe we know just a few things and can be included in the process as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to say something in response to Mari's question of the council, and I'm interested in hearing people's comments, which you're putting forward very politely. And what I would like to see the city council do tonight is withdraw this alternative proposal, because I would hate for one more dollar or one more minute to be spent lobbying Womata to consider a proposal that I don't support. I don't think the community has seen it or been able to ask questions about it, and certainly they haven't been able to contribute to it. I would like to see this council set up a timeframe for a design and review process, and if Womata won't make this a priority, the city of Tacoma Park should do that, and it's something that we have, you know, had the leisure of the last year to do, but I think it's better late than never.
Well, I would just urge that we not hash out the plans. I just pointed that out because it was just something very obvious. You know, when I looked at it, it was something that would affect us detrimentally, and probably anybody else in a wheelchair is trying to get through there, with a bus possibly marking, you know, blocking their site. But I'm doing it myself, I'm getting into the plan, and the thing that I would really hope that we would do is loop out of the plans and start thinking about all the pressures we can put to bear to stop this vote on Thursday, and at another time, visit the plan, if that's what we want to do. But to try to strategize how we're going to get O'Malley to call these people, and what we have to do, and pull out the stops and do it. Okay.
Thank you.
Josh Wright, Maple Avenue. First, I do want to thank Bruce for attending the meeting on short notice today. I appreciate that, Bruce. So just so I'm clear, the question I have, the first question is that, to be blunt, O'Malley is the one person who's going to get the two board members from Maryland to either pull the, put the item off the consent agenda or vote against it? Is that a correct assessment? There's no other force that's really going to get them to change their vote? You're not going to all of a sudden find the political will to?
I think that the issue of the concern that the county executive raised, I think, is a very powerful concern, and I wouldn't discount that, particularly since I think there's a number of other elected officials who've come in to support that concern.
Okay. Given that, would you suggest that probably the best strategy for the citizens, given that we don't have time to write letters, but if we called Leggett's office and O'Malley's office in as much mass as possible, do you think that would be helpful in supporting any political channels that you might work through? You know, if we can get 50 or 100 or 200 calls to O'Malley's office on this particular issue, do you think that's going to at least raise a little flag for him that he should pay attention?
My understanding is that the issue at the governor's level has essentially gone to the State Department of Transportation. And so it's probably, it's probably more of a question of getting to the State Secretary of Transportation at this point. But O'Malley is certainly the elected official, and it does not hurt to talk to him also.
Okay. The next is sort of a question or a quest. Given that there's 10 speaking slots at the Womata Board meeting, two minutes each, Thursday, I think the citizens would request that we can coordinate with you. I don't think we want to talk publicly about what our exact lobbying strategy is here, but that we can coordinate with you so that we are on the same page and we use those slots as effectively as possible.
If I can just comment briefly on that, that I think the, I would encourage anybody who wants to go to the Womata Board meeting on Thursday to go. I've never been in that room, but my understanding is, there's a fair amount of room, there are seats. And I would think we would do well to coordinate having maybe two or three people try and sign up, and having any number of people who are there, obviously in support of our position and ready to stand up and acknowledge that they're there in support of whoever is speaking, that will show people that we're strongly behind this.
Then the next item is just the O'Malley speech. So it is a speech, it's not a town hall, from my understanding.
That's my understanding.
It's on Wednesday. You know, as citizens, I think we're preparing to be there en masse with something that distinguishes us is about caring about this issue. But is there anything additional that you think we can do related to that, or to coordinate with you in trying to get time, even if it's two minutes, to talk with O'Malley after or before the speech?
Let's talk a little bit more about that.
Okay. And maybe it's not appropriate to go into this, but the last question is just related to, do we have legal strategies if this step does not work? And, you know, I understand it might not be appropriate to go into the details of what those are, but if you can, I'd be interested here. If not, I would just encourage us that we fight to the bitter end legally on this also.
Do you want to speak to that, Sue?
No, I'd just like to say that, of course, we have legal strategies. We still think the best thing that could happen is that we get a vote against the EYA plan on Thursday night. If we don't, then yes, we have ideas of how to go forward. I don't think it's best to necessarily discuss all of those in detail, but we have been building toward that, just in case. And I must say that we actually are very appreciative that we may have the county with us on that. That's what we're, that's what we're trying to forge, is that kind of an effort.
Yes.
Nancy Currier, Holly Avenue. This is, I'm sure, a very annoying question, but who pays the Womata Board members? People tend to listen to who pays them, and they get paid.
Actually, the different jurisdictions have different policies. Some of the jurisdictions pay them, and some others have a different process.
The board members actually work or represent the different jurisdictions. They represent the district, they represent Virginia, they represent Maryland, and to the extent that they receive money or directions, it would be from their jurisdiction.
Oh, not from some other government agency, like a federal agency or something?
Pardon?
Not from a federal agency, say?
No, no. There's actually a discussion of putting two federal reps on the Womata Board, but that hasn't happened yet. So they, so there are two representatives on the Womata Board that represent the Maryland Womata users.
Good evening, I'm Sarah Green. I live on Pony Branch Road in the District of Columbia. And I urge you to do whatever you can, in some very concrete and perhaps in some ways that you might think are a little unorthodox. Mrs. Ruth Abbott is here, in a building that Mr. Sam Abbott spends a lot of time in, and I, if I could possibly bring back the spirit of Sam Abbott in any possible form right now, I certainly would, because I think about him a lot. And I can tell you that he would be screaming at the top of his lungs, you all know he would. And you also know that he would be parking himself in front of the governor's car if he had to, to get attention. He would certainly be showing up with placards, and I can certainly go with a placard on Thursday, I intend to go with a placard on Thursday. I intend to make enough so that anybody who wants one can have one. And I'm hoping that as the mayor and the city council of Tacoma Park, that you will put on your aggressive hats, thinking of Sammy, just a little, and simply be able to say, "I'm the mayor of the city of Tacoma Park, Maryland, and I don't ask you for two minutes of your life every day, Governor O'Malley, but I'm asking now, because this is important, and basically, you all need two minutes." And I think I could say that, if I were you, with great sincerity and great respect, and hope that it would happen. I just think it's absolutely essential that you get to the governor any way you can, and look in his eyes, or get on the phone with him in some way, and just cut through it, because we're just, we're out of time in this regard. And after Thursday, again, channel Sammy Abbott and sue him. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I've heard a lot of comments, Jim DiLuigi again, about our Womata Board members. I did think it's important to let you know that I have reached out to Virginia. I have some very close contacts in Virginia, and I have been assured that the information is going at least to one of the Womata Board members directly, and to a state senator. So they have this information, so please push harder on Maryland's side. I'd be very embarrassed if the Maryland people didn't stand up for this thing, not that I haven't been embarrassed for this thing before, but I certainly wouldn't want to be. Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Sabrina Barron, I'm the president of Hysteria Tacoma. I think it's good that Sarah's invoking the spirit of Sam Abbott this evening. Unlike Sarah, I wasn't privileged to know him, but I did have the privilege not long ago of Nancy playing for me a recording of Mayor Abbott at a Womata hearing, lo those many years ago, when the station was first being planned. And in that room, it was Sam Abbott who was in control. It wasn't Womata. Womata had to sit up and listen to what Sam Abbott had to say. So I think Sarah's raising something very important, that you need to channel that spirit, and you need to act and respond in that way. It's very frustrating that here we are at 11:45 before the crack of midnight, which may be the crack of doom in this particular process here, and we're still talking about, should we get to the governor? How do we get to the governor? Yes, we need to talk to the governor. You need to talk to the governor's dog. You need to talk to the governor's chauffeur. Anybody who might have a word of influence in this process. It's, you know, we've been working on this for eight years, and these people haven't been contacted? These people haven't been pulled into this process?
They have, they have, Sabrina.
You've talked to the governor?
I have not personally talked to the governor, no.
Well, these people need to be pulled in. Anybody who might have any influence in this process, and if there's ever, ever, going to be a time, it's now, it's right now. And this is what needs to be going on. The citizens are working on this very hard. People who aren't elected to do this, people who aren't paid huge sums of money to consult on transit plans, have been working on this extremely hard for years and years and years and years. And the time is at hand. We can't slack off. Something has got to happen here to benefit this community. Something has got to happen here to benefit this community in this situation. And I sincerely hope that you are all out there assiduously, talking to anybody and everybody who can have an influence into this process and get the right thing done for this community finally. Thank you.
Well, I certainly understand the concern that you have, and we have met with both of our Womata Board representatives personally. So, I mean, it's not that we're not doing anything. We are definitely working on it.
I just want to add, in terms of the state involvement, there has been elected official conversation with the governor personally, one-on-one, and it seemed to us, based on that, that the governor needed to be briefed more completely by his Secretary of Transportation and staff underneath him. And so our staff has been at meetings with that staff to try to, again, do the kind of briefing and lobbying and presentation and information sharing that we've been trying to do with so many other people. We don't yet have, you know, the culmination of that. I do see Wednesday night as critical. That's wonderful to know he's gonna be at the middle school, because actually Sammy is one of the people that helped save the middle school. It was slated for closure, and it's the political work that was done by Sammy and others in our community that kept that school open, and that's why, that is why it's still there. So it's perfect that the governor is coming, maybe it's kind of faithful that that's the case. And I just want to say, I think it's always a problem in the eleventh hour that people start pointing fingers at one another and say, "You do this." No, you do that, you should do more. And the truth is, everybody of, in the city who's working on this is working night and day, very, very assiduously, and the elected officials are working very hard. My suggestion is that what the community might do to help is try to channel Sammy Abbott's spirit in terms of a direct action with real strength, because that's something that's harder for, for example, the city lawyer can't do that as easily as many of the rest of you can. But I do think that we need to get more attention to the issue. It's wonderful that David's article was in the Washington Post this Sunday, that certainly was helpful, but we have so much more yet to do, and we only have until Thursday. What I think is clear, absolutely clear, is probably everybody in this room, everybody in this room cares to the deepest level of their souls that we win this. So anybody who has better ideas of how to do it, please get in there and work with us. We are working very, very hard. Thank you.
My name is Lorraine Pison with Hysteria Tacoma, and I just want to say, you know, I don't really think we need any more plans. I think we have really already a room full of plans, and we have some very good community plans. And, you know, it really isn't about the plan, you know? And I do appreciate that, I think that what the city was trying to do here, and I'm not, I don't like the latest renditions, you know that, I think the purpose was to force a dialogue, but it's impossible to do that. And the reason that is, is that Womata has always decided from the very beginning, it was going to back EYA, the whole thing was a setup from the very beginning. We know that with the Central District Plan, the Chalonge Juju Jarvis, Fenty has just continued it. So really, while we have worked in earnest to come up with other solutions involving development, we never had a prayer to get Womata's attention. And so that's the sheer truth of it. I think what we're left with is to fight, and we knew we were always gonna come down to this day. Hey, if they want to vote in this shabby way that so disrespects our community, our county executive, our leaders, our state leaders, our federal leaders, our city, everyone, let them do it. We will fight you. We will fight you to the end. And this is a message for EYA, and I hope you're listening. You've been hiding behind Womata pretty well, but we're gonna fight you too. So we're not going away. So go ahead and do this. And believe me, we defeated a ten-lane freeway. And the spirit of Sammy Abbott is alive around here. We will fight you the way only Tacoma Park can fight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Carrie? And I think there's some council members who have some additional things they want to ask or say or whatever.
Why, thank you, and I really thank the people who came here tonight. I especially like to thank Sarah Green and the speakers who followed her, because I was just feeling a complete lack of energy in this room until the last few speakers. I think I, you're taking a little bit of the wind out of my sails of what I wanted to say. You know, I certainly want to say that I don't like EYA's plan. You know, we're talking about something that, we need a transit-oriented plan, something that addresses not only the current transit needs, which this plan doesn't, but also that, you know, protects the future transit needs for our next generations. You know, there's other plans that have been put on the table, I don't like any of them. But I don't think, I think it's all about the process, and, you know, you all have come here and said that, but where do we go from here? And I think what I've heard tonight is that nobody at Womata is listening. We're not really having an impact on the train that's moving forward. The work it through the government, talk to your elected officials, you know, file more paperwork, you know, point out all the problems with the plans, isn't working. And at some point, and this is why I liked the last few speakers, at some point, the community has to stand up. They've got to go, maybe it's to the governor, and push the governor for some more support. But I think the community en masse has to go to the Womata meeting and make a scene. Not that that's gonna change the vote, but it's gonna change the perceptions in the, in Womata, and it's gonna change the perception in the community. It isn't just a lethargic resistance to some development here in Tacoma Park, but there's really outrage at the way this is being done and the way it's just being railroaded through. So I'm not saying you've got to go do that, we've got to go do that. We've got to get together and be at these places with our placards, with our signs, with our outrage, and say, you know, let's do it right. You know, this is, it's our community, right? It's not O'Malley's community, it's not my community, it's our community, and we as a body have to go out there and be loud enough that they can't ignore us. And right now, they're ignoring the letters and they're ignoring pleas. I suggest it's time for a louder voice of our opinions. Thank you.
Anybody else want to say? Okay. We've gone through a lot of things, and I think it's appropriate that we take a quick break now. What I, I'm willing to talk to folks who are here about some additional things that we can do on a one-on-one basis, because I think there's some things that we need to talk about that probably isn't appropriate in a public forum. So we, the council will take a short break and come back for the rest of the regular news.
It'll take a lot of minutes and just sort of deal with that issue real quickly and then go back to the regular meeting agenda, just because we have the folks here right now. Nancy and anyone else, do you want to come sit up here so we can just talk real quickly about this? Is there anybody, Ruth or Saul or anyone else wants to come up here and join you? You can if you want. Okay.
She's channeling the spirit of Sam and saying, "I have a right to sit where I am."
She certainly does. I think the council has in front of it the language that you sent to me and also I think we have the additional materials that you provided through Terry. And I think the council has, I hope members of the council have had a chance to look at the language. I think it's a nice way of sort of capturing a lot of the things that were brought up in other people's language. I think you did a real good job of pulling it together and I like it. Is there any, yes?
Yes, I would just like to thank Nancy for working on this and also Saul and Tom Gagliaro, Reno Aldrigetti, for working on the text and drafting this. You know, I had originally envisioned a bronze plaque in the lobby.
A lot of bronze.
It looks like this is probably a little heavier than our foundation will support if we include all this text in a bronze plaque. But I believe Nancy, you had some suggestions. I think it's important that it be in a, whether it be bronze or whatever the form, that it be in a permanent kind of plaque and not something that is in any way appears to be temporary or easily removable. But Nancy, would you like to speak to that?
Sure. At this suggestion of Historic Tacoma, I went to the corner of Tulip and Cedar and checked out the Ziegler House plaque, which is about so big. It has about 14 sentences of 11 words each and two blocks of text with two large photos underneath it. And I think we can easily fit this language into those space requirements. There is a small amount of tweaking that has to be done because I think I said that for half a century, and it should be more like four decades, but you know, just some small things like that.
And the type of plaque that they had there, you said included photographs. Would you have an appropriate photograph of your father that could be included?
I think we do have a good photo or two. And also The Post and The New York Times took some great photos. They may be in their archives, the city may even have some. But we have at least three or four to choose from that are good portraits.
So I would like to see the, just move forward with a specific recommendation for the revised text and the appropriate media to put it on and then identify a location in the lobby where it would be mounted.
I think that's good and we can ask to have the staff work with you to come up with the right language for the resolution. One of the stories about Sam Abbott that I liked the best was that when there was the discussion in front of the council about naming part of the building the Sam Abbott Citizen Center, they said the reason they wanted to do that was because up until the time he was mayor, this, the building, the old building, was all sort of staff offices. And he insisted that there be a space within what was in the municipal building to have, where resident citizens of Tacoma Park could use it for their space. And that was why they went with Sam Abbott Citizen Center. And I think it's especially nice now that the whole, this whole floor of this building is dedicated to citizens' activities, that we can specifically say that the Sam Abbott Citizen Center is now this whole floor of this building. It's much bigger even. He was the first person to bring dedicated citizen space into the building and now that space is much, much bigger. And we can put a plaque on the lobby of that floor and, you know, it will stand as a testament to what he did to open the city up to the people who own it. So I think we can, we can work on that.
I just think, if I could, I just want to thank the mayor and the council, especially Councilmember Siemens. We have a wonderful heritage in Tacoma Park and we have poetry up now, we have culture. And we also have historic markers here, the seal that's behind you and the plaque here to Mayor Miller. And this would really add to the sense that Tacoma Park, which has a great future, also has a past that we want to recognize. And Sam was really part of that, so I think it'd be great if you pass this.
Okay, yes. If there's no objection from the council, we'll put this forward next week as a formal resolution. And next week is the last meeting of this council term, so we'll get it in just under the wire. Thank you very much.
May I say another word?
Sure.
I've been listening to the discussion on this Womata situation and the fight against the EYA plan that has gone on for, since 1999, I guess, when the sale was first proposed. And again, this goes back 30-some years. This goes back to the very beginning of the metro system and the Metro Impact Plan. At that time, when we fought the Metro Impact development, the demolition of four square blocks of homes, the widening of Piney Branch Road, the widening of 410 and so on, we didn't have the council and the mayor supporting us. We didn't have Montgomery County, yet we were able to turn that around. Why? My dad, and the reason it's, the suggestion is that it be the Sam Abbott Citizen Center is not because he was the first person to want to throw the building open, though that's a wonderful point that you make. It's because he had an ability to crystallize issues, build coalitions, mobilize people and pursue the truth. Now, my dad did not practice the politics as the art of the possible. He was not a consensus maker. He didn't drive towards consensus. I talked to him about this because you can imagine what it was like living with someone who was called Washington's angriest mayor and angered this and angered that. And we know he had a lot of enemies, we know he still has a lot of enemies. God bless his soul. He didn't practice the art of the possible, he didn't try to build consensus. I talked to him as a young person about this. I wanted him to educate me, I couldn't understand why pay this price. He told me the American Revolution was not about consensus. A third were revolutionaries, a third were Tories and a third of the people sat on the fence. Look what our founding fathers and mothers pulled off. Not practicing the art of the possible, not practicing consensus politics, not relying on planners, on statistics, pursuing the truth, penetrating the layers till you get to that, owning that truth, sharing that truth, building coalitions, taking people from disparate backgrounds, poor, rich, black, white, immigrants, Native Americans, middle-class people. He didn't think you had to agree on everything. You just had to have a common ground, not to be confused with a consensus, a level of common need, a level of common passion. How did he work? He worked in many ways. He knew, he had like a photographic memory. He knew statistics. He could talk architecture, he was a trained artisan architect. His design sense, spatial relations, processes was unbelievable. He was a strategist. He had been an intelligence officer in World War II, penetrating the German forest with his hut on his back. He got strong through these experiences, through union organizing when you got arrested to try to organize the unemployed. There was no social security. There were no weekends, the things we take for granted, people like my dad, and they are millions. We don't have to channel his spirit. My dad unfortunately is dead and gone. We have this inside ourselves. You must, even with this stupid little battle with EYA. This is a small corner of the world, but it is our corner of the world. This is a small green space. We need more than a half acre called a Village Green. This EYA situation, this plot of land is the gateway to Tacoma Park. We don't need a bunch of townhouses, whatever, it's just uglifying the situation even more. We still don't have the plan. It's not our job to come up with a plan. It's our job to say, it's our town, the air blows, not just on DC, it blows on us also. And this is where, this is where we're holding the line. How do we hold it? Yes, we hold it with statistics, we hold it with plans, a variety of plans. We hold it with a legal strategy, we hold it with organizing. Some of us, my legal strategy is, I wouldn't mind getting arrested on this issue. I've never been arrested. I'm the only person in my family who's never been arrested. And this little plot of green space, see, I remember when it was a perpetual park. I was promised that this was a perpetual park. And everybody else unfortunately has passed away from that era or moved. But I was told that and I, you know, that might be my remote memory, but it's my memory. And that's my truth in this issue. So, you know, I'm just, I'm not ready yet, but when the day comes, you know, show me the tree and I'll bring my own chain. But we are very, very upset. We need transparency, not just from EYA, we need transparency with this, in the city. Everybody needs transparency in this day and age. I've come to understand in myself that this little corner of Tacoma Park is more than just, look at our passion, look at our level of passion for this. Look how people from different perspectives are united around this. What is the core? You know, what, we have a world that has gone awry. We have a government that is not transparent. We have so many abuses of power. And we have, we have such a passion to maintain the environment and democracy, which is under threat. To me, this little corner of Tacoma Park somehow has come to symbolize that. Call me crazy, that's the way I feel about it. I really feel very strongly about this. So, well, I guess I've channeled my dad's spirit. But I just urge you not to practice the politics of the possible. Go for the ideal. You will make enemies, but you will make friends and your friends will be there well after you're gone. But more importantly, you will find a truth for yourself and a truth for this community. And we need you to do that and we ourselves need to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Well, from that going on to another issue which the city feels very passionately about, and that's a sanctuary law. The council has in front of us the first... Do you want to, Sue, do you want to talk to us at all about the sanctuary ordinance? I mean, I assume that, Eliza, do you want to come up and sit and talk to us? Okay, all right, you can do that, sure.
As you can see, this ordinance is an enhancing of the current sanctuary law with several fairly technical amendments, but with a very lengthy whereas group of clauses which recommit the city to making this a sanctuary city. I don't think we need to go into the details unless anybody has any questions.
First of all, would someone like to move this ordinance?
Move it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions, council questions on the ordinance first? Okay, I actually heard Doug first, so.
Yes, thank you. This is relatively minor and doesn't affect the substance of the ordinance as proposed here. But it troubles me in the third whereas, the second clause and United States Trade Policies, including free trade agreements. It's certainly a subject of at least some disagreement about whether the main group of trade agreements, known as the North American Free Trade Agreement, are, is beneficial to Canada, Mexico, as opposed to the United States. And the other grouping called CAFTA, Central American Free Trade Agreement, this has just gone into effect. So it would not be accurate to say that it has contributed in any way to the crisis, the economic crisis that may still affect some of these countries. So my proposal would be to strike the phrase, beginning with "and" United States Trade Policies, including free trade agreements. I just don't think that's an accurate statement.
And your proposal is to strike it to the end of the whereas clause?
To the end of agreements. I think, I think it's, there's probably more consensus on the negative effect of the amount of debt that occurred as a cause and effect with the economic problems besetting that area. I think that that is, that is an accurate statement. So that should be left as it is.
Okay, so you're, so what you're proposing is...
I would accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay. Anyone else? I think you also wanted to say something, didn't you, Terry?
Yes, I, and I believe Mr. Snapper also had a...
Yes.
But I just wanted to thank you, Susan, for your many hours of work on this ordinance and most specifically the negotiation process you went through with... and most specifically, the negotiation process you went through with all of the interested parties. And I found the whole process to be very beneficial, very helpful, and I appreciate your dedication to getting to the final result, which is something that I think, and I encourage my colleagues to support.
Rather than saying thank you, I wanted to say that it really deserves to be said to Eliza Layton from CASA and Kenneth Sigmund from my office, but thank you for that.
Yes, I had a kind of a question about the first whereas. It includes a list of tradition of embracing and valuing diversity and respecting the civil and human rights of, and then there's a list of things. I would like to see us add both sex to that list as well as sexual orientation to that I think these are both very strong values in Tacoma Park.
I'm assuming that that's not a problem?
Might we make it gender?
Yes. I think technically that's correct.
Thank you.
Gender and sexual orientation.
And then I have a question for the ordinance. I'll wait for the-
Yeah.
In the actual revised ordinance, I have a concern about B. It appeared, at least on first reading, that, I mean, part A says that the ICE is, we're not going to cooperate with ICE. And then the second one has some, you know, kind of negatives there that I couldn't necessarily follow. And ICE gets repeated again. And my confusion made me wonder if B could be construed as prohibiting the police department working with ICE on a criminal investigation that perhaps originated in some other, you know, that had some other aspect. It was started under some other criminal activity and they needed cooperation from ICE or they wished to communicate with ICE about it. So, I'm not sure I would be fully comfortable with that. I like the A part, which says we're not going to be cooperating with them for violations of the immigration and national, naturalization laws. But I'm a little concerned about how that language actually works in the second part.
So, the question is, does the second part prohibit Tacoma Park Police Department from working with ICE if it is a non-immigration criminal activity?
Right, we might get additional information from ICE or something like that. And that was, it's really a question because I'm not sure I understand the language fully And one, one concrete, to make it concrete, do we need to add at the end of it that same catch-all phrase about, there's something along the lines that it only pertains to violation of immigration and naturalization laws?
Um.
Am I making myself clear?
Yes, I don't know, I guess it didn't occur to me that ICE might need our cooperation on matters, on criminal matters, other than that.
That we might need their cooperation is what I'm more concerned about.
This is actually language that was in the original ordinance? It's not part of the proposed changes?
Yes, it is the original ordinance, the only change is the name of the agency.
Yeah.
Well, if you feel it's worked fine, then I'd be satisfied with that. I just really want reassurance here.
Maybe what I can suggest is that we leave it as is for first reading and we ask the city attorney and her associates to take a look at it prior to second reading and let the council know if there's a concern there. And also, you know, consult with the CASA attorneys.
Yes, thank you.
Is there any other council questions on this, comments? Yes, first?
Just to note that my understanding is that there's the likelihood that the last section about confidentiality, 904040, would, has caused the city clerk's office to look at whether the non-resident, non-citizen voter list would therefore be something that would be confidential and therefore not releasable to, for instance, candidates for office who wanted to contact people. Is that a fair representation of the sense at this point?
It's interesting, we originally had language that made, that said basically a person might release the ability for the city to give the information out. And we had taken that out on the concern that we didn't want there to be any pressure on anybody to feel that they must do such a release. But this is another good example of, I bet we could improve this for second reading and if we left it this way now and then come up with a suggestion for, for second reading.
Okay. I think those are, those are both good issues. Anything else? All right, are there any public, yes, go ahead.
So, that, does that imply then that folks who are not US citizens, who are in the United States and have not come through illegal means, could vote in the city?
We, we don't ask about their legal status when we sign them up.
And therefore, if they can vote, they can run for office?
Right.
You're kidding me?
No.
Counsel, I'm glad that's a charter issue that was, that we could go back and look at, that the charter does create this ability to vote in local elections by non-citizens and doesn't further specify as to whether the non-citizen is here legally or not.
And if we don't want to cooperate with the feds on looking into immigration status, we don't particularly want to get into looking at immigration status for eligibility to vote in the city.
Right. And I think that that's a good principle because I think it's an important statement for the city to make. On the other hand, I would be very surprised if anyone who was not documented, the first thing they're not, the first thing they're going to do is not run into and sign up on a government list. So, I'm not, I'm not sure that it's an issue, but I think that it's important to the extent that it is there that we, that we make that statement, that people are welcome in our community regardless of their documentation status.
I don't have a problem with that, but I think the issue around having people vote and run for office who are, say, here, on a temporary basis, even.
Sure, residency requirements. Well, they're, they're subject to the same residency requirements as anybody else.
We had people at the time we wrote the charter amendment who were, for example, temporary or green card holders, but had been here for 10, 15, 20 years.
Right, but they have a green card.
I'm not sure what's your question.
I'm not sure what the question is.
Well, I just didn't realize that that was the case. And I think that we've talked about this law in terms of providing a safe haven and the issues related to the police department, and we don't want the police enforcing the immigration laws, but it has other consequences that I hadn't considered that one.
Or not necessarily.
Okay, my suggestion is, maybe you can contemplate that between now and next week, and if you have a specific suggestion, bring it to us. Is there any public comments on this ordinance at first reading?
I just have a short public comment from Council of Maryland. On behalf of Council of Maryland and the immigrant community in Tacoma Park, I would like to thank you for your support of the proposed ordinance reaffirming and strengthening the Tacoma Park Sanctuary Law. You are thankful for a city council that is proactive and recognizes the value of immigrants in the community and ensuring that immigrants are treated respectfully and fairly. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, do you have a comment?
Yes, I do. My name is Steve Davies. I live at 6717 Pomper Avenue, and I thank you for the opportunity to comment on this. I had some questions and comments, and I'll probably jump around a little bit, but I do believe that the preamble especially needs to be supported factually. There's already, you know, council and fairies already expressing disagreement over one of these statements here, which I don't know if there's any documentation for it, that free trade agreements are causing millions of people, or contributing to, you know, millions of people leaving their countries to feed their families.
Well, that's, that's out now.
It's out.
It's out.
Completely out.
It's out.
Then, I am also opposed to racial profiling. I don't think that's right, and it's not legal.
Could you speak up a little bit? I'm having trouble hearing you.
However.
That's great.
There we go. Racial profiling is not right, it's not legal. This says whereas granting the officers the authority to enforce immigration laws may lead to racial profiling. I think one of the messages that comes out of that is that although we've hired a new chief that everyone seems to think is doing a great job, he's got a lot of energy, I guess our police force is at full, full strength now for the first time in years, but I think what we're saying with this is we don't really trust our, our police officers to act legally. We don't trust our police chief to train these folks to do the right thing. I think it's a, it's a mixed message we've been, we're sending. We want police enforcement, we want law enforcement, but this guy comes in and tries to propose something to protect officers, to protect the public, and, you know, he's not, he's not agreeing with him, which of course is your right. However, let me move on, since I'm not doing as well as I had hoped. There's one thing in this preamble that I, I think it would be good to get some more information on. The last whereas where it says that, you know, reaffirming our status is one of over 70 cities, counties, and states that have enacted sanctuary laws prohibiting governmental agencies from inquiring about immigration status and uniformly enforcing immigration law provisions. Do all seven of those cities, counties, and states have the same restrictions that we do in ours? Do, do any of them carve out any kind of narrow exception or any exception at all? Has anybody looked into that?
I believe that the staff has looked into some of those, probably not all 70. Do you want to respond to that briefly?
Sure.
The question is, do they all have the same rules?
No, absolutely not. I think our, our law is probably the most protective of immigrant rights of any law that I've seen, but other jurisdictions have, do have it in various forms.
Okay, thank you. Can you?
Yeah, wrap it up. National Immigration Law Center has sample language under law enforcement. It says, "Police officers are exempted from the above limitations with respect to a person whom the officer has reasonable suspicion to believe has been convicted of a felony criminal violation, was deported or left the United States after the conviction," and three is again present in the United States. This is the National Immigration Law Center. I don't know if they're left enough for us, but anyway.
And I think that's the issue that the council discussed at, at great length the other day, yes, or-
It also says in their sample, "Nothing in this ordinance shall be construed to prohibit any city agent from cooperating with federal immigration authorities when required under federal law." One last thing, "All federal roles should be public if we want transparency," which was already alluded to here as being something that we do want as a goal.
Well, that, that is, that is an issue that the city attorney has said that she will look at between now and second reading of the ordinance. All of our-
That's, that's my opinion.
Okay, good.
Remember the public.
Thanks, thank you. That and the other issue that was brought up will be, the council will get further information between now and the second reading. All these ordinances have to go through two readings. Are there any other public comments? All right, the ordinance is before the council for first reading. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ordinance passes at first reading.
I abstain.
We had an abstention.
Okay, there's, there's one abstention. It, it passes with six votes and one abstention. The next item on the agenda is the ordinance amending the urban forest chapter of the city code. And we did have a preliminary discussion with this, and I understand that there has been discussions between one of the city attorneys and the chair of the Committee on the Environment, and we've got materials in our packet. I think we've got the initial proposal, we've got a follow-up from Catherine Tunis, then we've got, we've got a follow-up to the follow-up from Ken Sigmund. The council has all this information in front of us. And what I'd like to do is, I don't, I don't think it's really worthwhile for you all to repeat everything you wrote us, I'm assuming that the council has seen that, but maybe if you wanted to just summarize, you know, the proposal you had. Okay, we could have some members of the tree commission, do you want to join us in Okay, let's start with Mr. Sigmund and then go to Ms. Tunis.
The, the proposed amendments that were presented to the council last week arose when the tree commission discovered essentially a loophole in the existing tree permit appeal process. And that is that if the city arborist preliminarily denies a permit, there's no posting requirement, and the, the applicant can appeal to the tree commission for a reversal of the denial. And what, what ends up happening is the commission hears from the applicant as to why they want to remove the tree, why they should be able to remove the tree, and somebody who might be opposed to the permit is cut out of the process because there's been no notice of the hearing. So, the amendment last week requires that notice of the hearing be posted on the property for two weeks, or 15 days prior to the hearing. So, anybody who's interested, they'll see notice as this, this denial has been appealed, the tree commission will make a final decision, they may decide to issue the permit. If you want to present evidence in support of this tree, then come to the hearing to do so. I made some additional changes based on concerns raised by Ms. Tunis that there have been some problems in the past with people getting adequate notice of hearings and hearing dates being changed. And I think what has, has been the practice is that the, the arborist has worked with the parties that he knows are interested in the hearing to come up with a date that works for everybody, which I think in large part has been okay, but I think the ideal solution would be to, to have a set permit date with a set amount of notice. So, I did add that additional change. As soon as has, she has a disagreement as to what the original intent of the law was, what the process should be, and I've spoken with her and I hear her concerns, but I, I don't agree with her interpretation of the code, and I also don't agree that- don't agree with her interpretation of the code, and I also don't agree that the procedures she suggests makes sense. I think they're impractical, and I don't think they're necessarily fair. So, I explained to her that I was sticking with my original proposal, and she's going to present an alternative to you.
Thank you.
Okay, we did talk about it, and we do have one basic disagreement, which is on the interpretation of the process, which is presented graphically. This is my understanding from having gone through major rewrites in the past of what the process would be, that if someone applies for a permit, and the arborist has criteria that he has to go to, and he decides to issue the permit, it goes to the 15-day posting period. If a citizen wants to appeal that, they give notice of the appeal, and a tree commission hearing is set. Now, this has been the process that everybody is familiar with, and happens in most cases, but if there's a denial of the preliminary tree permit, the applicant also has the option to appeal that. And I think the key thing is that the misinterpretation, well, I believe it's a misinterpretation of what the ordinance is reading, and I've been involved in this since the early 90s, and to say that if it goes to a hearing at that preliminary permit decision process, that the tree commission can then jump, sort of like a short circuit, to a final permit issuance, rather than, as I read the language in the law, and as it was intended, that at that stage in the process, the tree commission's decision would be on the preliminary permit. So, if they make that decision that yes, the arborist erred, he made a mistake, and the preliminary permit should have been issued, then that would be issued, and that will start the 15-day notice period. Now, it could be, and it would only happen in rare, difficult cases, that the tree commission might hear twice on the same tree. But that would, they would then have already looked at all of the criteria and possibly gone out to look at the tree and made a preliminary decision, and so they really would only need to change their decision if there was new information brought forward, or something that helped them to look at the information that they had in a different light and then come to a different decision. But that was always what was envisioned to be the basic process. Now, what I see is that if the tree commission and the current city attorney who's working with the tree commission sees this as the only hearing in these cases, that is a problem. That's definitely a problem. And I think what he's proposed in terms of solving that, to post notice of these hearings, is a step in the right direction, but I think it's an imperfect step, and I think a better step would be go back to this original process, and I think that what's most important here is for council to signal what their intent is, and that intent really needs to be reflected in the minutes, because if it's not, somebody coming along 20 years from now can read this plain language and make a different interpretation, and that's not necessarily what we want to do. Now, I see there's three options here for council, or maybe four or five, because they can also choose do nothing, or ask us to look at it some more, or council wants to look at it some more. But I see three options. One is to choose what Ken has proposed. The other is to choose what I have proposed and add one sentence to clarify the meaning of paragraph J, which is not in Ken's language, but it is in my language, and it refers to those preliminary permit decision appeals, and it says that the tree commission will make a decision on those appeals. It doesn't say that they will issue a permit, it says it will make a decision, and that's different language than in other parts of the law where it says they can issue a permit. So, that's option two. But option three, and I think because it's come about, because we've talked about this, would be sort of almost the best of combining those two suggestions, would be to clarify that this is the process, but also add a notification for the hearings and allow the public to attend a hearing and perhaps offer relevant information if they felt that they needed to. So, those are the three options that I see, and again, I think the most important thing is for council to, you know, think about which is the best approach, which I, you know, I think people do have problems as an ordinary citizen. I know the attorney doesn't have problems going to a hearing, he does it all the time, but I think an ordinary citizen would have, would be less likely to go to a hearing cold, not knowing what the issues are, not knowing how to prepare, than they would of being able to call the arborist and say, "I need to know what these issues are," maybe be able to find out what the issues are in that 15-day posting period, and then decide at the end whether they need to issue an appeal or not.
Okay, thank you. Do either of the members of the tree commission have anything you want to add to this at this point?
Well, I'm here in support of the position that Ken has outlined.
Could you speak up a little bit?
Yeah, sure. I'm here in support of the position that Ken has outlined.
Okay.
I do think that the language in here is pretty clear, that it says that the tree commission upon appeal shall issue a tree permit, and I know that it does not say that in paragraph J, it just says the commission shall issue its decision on the appeal, but I'm kind of at a loss to describe any other circumstances under which we would issue a tree permit other than on appeal. So, it's clear to me that this must refer to that. I don't think that anything that Ken has outlined here precludes an interested citizen from calling the arborist before hearing to get some more information, and I don't see a big difference between coming to the hearing as described in here and the hearings described in Ms. Tunis's memo. So, I think that this, the proposed amendment actually meets our concerns. We were discussing this in a pre-commission meeting, and we found to our, much to our horrors, that there wasn't, we perceived to be a loophole that could cut citizens out of the process and keep people who had an interest in saving a particular tree or appealing a decision from ever finding out that the tree was in peril. So, that was what was behind drafting these changes, and they really met my concerns with pre-commission.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I wonder if some of the confusion isn't a consequence of the language in the ordinance itself, where there are these references to preliminary approvals, preliminary permits, and final permits. But I think that the confusion is because basically the arborist proposes, or either approves or denies, a preliminary permit, and it's preliminary because it depends on what happens next, whether there's a 15-day posting notice, and then if there's no appeal, then that permit is final. However, if there is an appeal, then the tree commission convenes, and hearings are public. I mean, anyone is welcome to either to show up and provide input or to observe. But once the tree commission has, and all interested parties have met, they render a decision which is effectively final. I mean, it is the final decision on the fate of the permit, at least that's my understanding. And if a plaintiff, or if one of the members has a grievance, they can then take it on to the next step, next legal step, which is to appeal it to the county court. But the city, the tree commission does make the decision, that is our job, to make decisions upon appeal. So--
Let me see.
Can I add just one thing? Because I didn't see Ken's new material that he submitted today. I didn't see it until I just walked in, and I do think there's some, perhaps some misunderstandings of what I have presented, in that a person would not be able to appeal again and again and again. There would be just one appeal. I mean, it could be that there would be two hearings on the same tree, but, and it's not just that the tree commission can only issue preliminary decisions, it's two completely different situations. They can issue final decisions if they're at that stage, the final stage of the process. So, I think there's some, a lot of confusion and misunderstanding here when I read what I've just got today, and of course, we have members to talk about what he just presented today.
Okay. Let me see if there's any questions on the part of the council, and then sort of get a sense of where the council wants to go with this. Colleen, and then Terry.
This is one of these things where even though I read all of these legislative things all day long, they still make my head spin.
You're gonna have to speak up too. Here, I'm getting deaf tonight.
All right, I get closer to the microphone. So, would you say, Ken, that the flowchart that Catherine produced is accurate?
As to how the process should work, or under the current--
Is it accurate as to how the process does work, and is it accurate to how the process would work under the proposed changes that you have proposed?
No, I think it's inaccurate in that once the tree commission has made a decision that the next step is the ministerial act of issuing a permit in accordance with the tree commission's order. So, it's not a preliminary, it's not posted again so that people can appeal. That's the last decision within the city.
So, are you saying that if somebody applies for a permit, and the arborist denies the permit, and it goes to the tree commission, that the tree commission can then issue the permit at that point, before there's been a 15-day posting?
Yes, that's the problem we're addressing.
Well, yeah, that would be a big problem. That would be a big problem.
There's no current requirement for a posting, so no one knows that there is a hearing, a public hearing.
And that's what we're trying to address.
And that's what we're trying to address.
I think that problem's been there from the start in the law, but I don't think, I think the, kind of the presumption had always been that an arborist is going to, if an arborist denies a permit, that the tree commission certainly isn't going to overrule that, but I think, you know, the arborist has gotten a sense of, the tree commission, the tree commission has gotten a sense of the arborist, and so there are some back and forth.
Okay, and so does your proposed solution address this by when the tree commission says, makes a decision now, and I guess this is the difference between the language of making a decision issuing a permit, so does your proposal then change it so that when the tree commission gets an appeal from somebody based on just the arborist's decision not to provide a preliminary permit, that it then goes back into the 15-day posting process?
No, what it does is if the permit applicant who has received a preliminary denial decides to appeal that decision, that there's a, that notice that the applicant's appealed, that the commission is going to reconsider the arborist's decision and may end up granting a permit, that notice of that hearing has to be posted.
For 15 days.
Right.
So, what that does is effectively moves the posting period up so that it's not, you still have an opportunity for citizen or residents to participate in the process, because basically the notice goes up saying, "Here is a tree that may come down. This is your opportunity to have some input on it," and then you get details of the hearing, and you can, if you have an objection to that, or want to get more information about it than you can. It's, when we saw that there wasn't that opportunity for public input, when the tree commission might approve the permit, that's when we went to Ken and kind of went back and forth with a couple of solutions, but this one seemed to be the one that put least burden on the process and accomplished really what our concern was in terms of providing public input.
The rationale for treating denials and grants, preliminary denials and preliminary
grants of permits differently is that if there's a preliminary denial, the only person who can appeal would be the applicant, and if the applicant doesn't appeal within the 15 days, then the denial is final. There's no need for hearing.
So, the fastest path to a tree permit then becomes the arborist denying the permit, the person appealing to the tree commission, and they're becoming a 15-day notice period for a hearing and then a permit being issued. But if the arborist grants the permit, and then by the end of the 15-day hearing period, someone appeals, there's at least another 15 days.
Maybe the arborist could come--
Yeah, and before Todd starts, we did do a chart that lists out each of the three options that's been discussed in a way that clarifies where they're similar and where they're different, and if the council would like to see that. The diagram that you had from the Committee on the Environment is not at all a complete process, it's just their view of the way they thought it should have been. It doesn't reflect current practice nor past practice. It doesn't reflect what Ken is proposing, and it doesn't really show their process in a clear light. So, if the council would like to see that--
I'd love a copy of that. Sure, that would be helpful.
I think that Colleen's question gets to the key points of the disagreement that we're having, which is that, you know, what I presented was what was originally intended in the law and as written, but that practice has changed over time, because I think the number of cases where there would be a denial and then an appeal of that denial are very few, and so it has just sort of changed in practice, but the language of the law itself has not changed, and so we're sort of coming to you with this sense of like, all right, do we want to change the, do we want to codify this change in practice? Is this change in practice better, or is it better to go back to this original view?
Again, we're getting new information.
These charts, the top is current process, which is what caused the problem. The tree commission made a decision to issue a permit, and there had been no public notice prior to the hearing, so there could be no public comment. It was simply myself who denied the application and the applicant arguing in front of the commission with no outside input. The amendment to the ordinance will provide for a posting period, so there will be an opportunity for public input at the hearing. So, at the hearing, there will be any public input that shows up, the applicant and myself, and then the tree commission will make their decision. So, in coming back to what you said, currently, the fastest way to get a permit is somebody applies, I approve, there's a 15-day period, nobody appeals, the permit's issued. If I deny, the applicant can appeal during the 15-day period, then now, if this proposed amendment goes through, there would then be another 15-day posting period in the public view to say that there is a committee hearing on this tree, so we're mimicking the 15-day preliminary approval posting period, and then there's a tree commission hearing. So, then that would limit it to whatever the most convenient meeting date is.
I mean, I guess to, just your concern about a denial being the faster way to a permit, I guess it's true in theory if the hearing dates, available hearing dates were close in theory-- in theory, you could speed up the process by 15 days by having a denial. But in practice, I think it's unlikely to speed up the hearing by much. And also it's a, I mean, it's a complete wild card as to whether the commission's going to reverse the decision, you know, whether it's gonna get appealed to circuit court. So I don't think there's much opportunity to manipulate the system.
Oh, okay. But in all fairness to the materials that Catherine Tunis presented, you know, yeah, that's unlikely, but I think it's also unlikely that people are gonna forestall the issuance of a permit indefinitely, you know, by going through the loop as you've suggested.
There's only one law here.
I mean, I think, I mean, this law is complex, and I think, you know, part of the...
Complex.
Complex. And I think part of the reason behind that is that there's concern from all sides that people are going to try and take advantage of the law. And I think one thing that has happened in the past is that opponents of a tree permit have used, or they might not even be necessarily opposed to a specific tree permit, but they've used the tree lot to delay construction activity that their neighbors might be engaging in, or just it's, I think there is concern that it would be abused, and I think that's a very real concern that someone would take the opportunity to drag out the process.
Terry, do you have a question?
All right, thank you. And speaking of dragging out the process, this is a complex law, as you said, and it's a complex issue that we're talking about tonight, did a couple weeks ago. I continue to be frustrated that we get helpful documents like this sitting here on the dais rather than in our council packages ahead of time, so we, council has the time to review them before coming to meetings. That's a bigger issue, not just about this, but I think this one illustrates very well why it's problematic. But I do appreciate the material. I'm trying to figure out, does this mean then that in either of the proposed solutions, that the community gets a 15-day notice and the opportunity to participate in the process?
Yes, that's true. They would be slightly different processes. One, it's not in the law that the arborist would work with an appellant to set a date. But in the, if we went with this process where it goes back into there and goes to the 15-day notice period, then they would have that opportunity. With this notice, if we added, well, excuse me, if we added Ken's proposed thing where it would go just to there and there wouldn't be that feedback, it would be either yes, there's a permit, or no, there's a permit, not a permit, there would not be the opportunity for the arborist to work with all interested parties to find an appeal, I mean, a hearing date that would work because it would be noted, when you do that 15-day notice, that would be, the hearing is here, it's here, it's now, this is the time, and that's it. Either you can come or you can't. So...
Okay, so from your chart, what's missing then is in fact, there is a 15-day waiting period or a notice period.
Yeah, this would be the 15-day notice period.
If we went ahead, but if we went with the current process, there's still a 15-day notice period.
The current practice does not include a 15-day notice prior to the hearing. The proposed amendment requires a 15-day notice prior to the hearing, which is on the second Tuesday of every month. That, for denial. I mean, in practice, tree commission meets the second Tuesday of every month, that's on the calendar for six months out. So depending on the time of the appeal, a denial and appeal, and if there's time for the 15-day waiting period before that regularly scheduled tree commission meeting, that's when it would be.
Okay. Now, in one, it's a, an appeal that's not coming from a denial, but through the other process, in that case, does the appellant typically work with you and discuss the issue with you prior to getting to the tree commission?
What I, I have only had one appeal, and that was an appeal of a denial. The citizen concerns about approvals, preliminary approvals that I've given, I meet with them and I talk about why I made my decision, and the benefits and the costs, and so far, nobody's asked for a hearing to try and reverse a permit that I've granted. In that situation, though, that 15-day period that follows my preliminary approval is the posting that gives them an opportunity to contact me to express their concerns. If we, if I can't solve their concerns, then it goes to the tree commission at the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay, then I guess the question then is, is it as likely that someone who is supporting your denial that would contact you during the 15-day waiting period if we add it in?
Absolutely, if it's posted. I'm Brett on a famous house.
And I'm assuming those are the ones that you're thinking of, is the person that's going to support the denial?
Whether they will be given adequate notice.
Yeah, whether they're given adequate notice to do that.
And if the sign's up there saying that a denial was, preliminary denial was issued on this application and has been appealed, and we'd have to write up the sign, has been appealed, public hearing on that denial will be held on this date.
And maybe reversed in the permitting?
And maybe reversed in the permit issued. I would assume anybody that supports my denial would call me and say, hey, can I come and say, I agree? But that is the decision to be made with this amendment.
Are there any other council questions of any of the folks in front of us? Okay. What does the council wish to do at this point? Does someone want to move forward with the ordinance by moving it?
It's moved and seconded, so the proposed changes to the ordinance, the changes proposed
by the city attorney are before the council right now. Are there any additional council comments? Are there any public comments on the ordinance at this point? All right, it's before the council, this is the first reading of the ordinance. All those in favor of the ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It sounds to me like the ayes have it. All right, the ordinance passes at first reading. There will be another reading of the same ordinance in a week. Thank you all very much, and thank you for those helpful explanations. I think we all know much more about the tree permit process than we ever did before. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a single reading ordinance for the purchase of two public works trucks.
Hi, the replacement of these trucks was approved in the fiscal year '08 budget. They're in the equipment replacement reserve. Again, these are replacements of two existing vehicles. One is an F-250 pickup, and the other is a medium-sized dump truck that currently our fleet had F-350s. And as has been the case in the past, we've recommended an increase in size to F-450s, a larger engine to do the work that we needed to do. So this, I believe, is our last 350 in the fleet, which at this point would be upgraded with the purchase of this F-450 before you. We did put out a request for proposals and got three bids back. The contractor you see on the ordinance has had the lowest responsive and responsible bid, and it's our recommendation that we purchase both trucks for more support.
Okay. Yes.
I did want to call to the council's attention that the amount of the two trucks does exceed what is included in the FY '08 budget. As the cover sheet indicates, there are sufficient funds in the equipment replacement reserve to cover the shortfall, but I did want to make sure the council was aware of that. We are not recommending a budget amendment at this time to appropriate those funds until we've purchased all the items that are to be funded from the equipment replacement reserve, and we see if there's a shortfall that needs to be addressed by year's end.
Okay. All right. The proposal is before the council. Yes.
I have a question.
Okay.
From Ms. Braithley. I just wonder, you know, as we're watching the gasoline prices escalate, I wondered what we've done or what we're doing in our vehicle purchases to try to look for improved gas mileage or alternate fuel?
Well, we do use the biodiesel for our diesel vehicles. For our gasoline-powered vehicles, we're pretty much stuck with the industry standard at this point. The city's made a decision to stay with the Fords, and at this point Ford hasn't offered any alternative-fueled vehicle in the truck-type model that we can take advantage of. So currently, our truck fleet is fairly consistently either the Ford trucks or the diesel-powered trucks, which we use the mixture of 80/20 soy oil and diesel for the diesel fuel.
Are we sticking with Ford because of the pre-ordinance or for other reasons?
Well, from a practical point on our end, there may be other reasons that drove that decision in the past on the council's end. For our city and maintenance ends, it's primarily just to make sure that we're familiar with the equipment, we have usability of parts, knowledge of the mechanics, and familiarity with the equipment itself so that we can better service it. We do try to do as much of the maintenance work as possible in-house to save money and speed the time in which our vehicles are repaired and back on the road.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, I believe.
You moved it?
No, I didn't.
Okay, you moved it. All right, I'm sorry, it's getting late. My memory is lapsic. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Any additional council questions or comments? Any public comments on this ordinance? This is a single reading ordinance because the funding, most of it, is in the equipment replacement reserve. All right, I don't see any. Will the clerk please call the roll? Aye?
Aye.
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 This ordinance, the single reading ordinance, is approved. I see John Hume's been sitting very patiently, so I'm gonna reverse the next two items and take you up next. This would be the second reading of the ordinance on the commercial district facade regulations. Yes, anything you would like to?
Yes, well, first of all, I thank council for their rearrangement. I really do appreciate that. My name is John Hume. I'm a member of the facade advisory board, also a local business owner. And I'm just here tonight on the occasion of the second reading of this ordinance to ask the council, do vote to approve this on its second reading. The ordinance revising the Tacoma Park Code for commercial district facade regulations does clear up some ambiguities and redundancies in the previous ordinance. It also clarifies standards for adherence to the Montgomery County Code, and specifically it eliminates some potentially confusing situations pertaining to temporary and canopy signage. I do feel, and I believe I speak for the rest of the board, it does, the new ordinance will complement the historic character of our Main Street area. It will make our signage specifically in the case of projecting signage. It makes this signage more pedestrian-friendly. It will help to draw in the foot traffic that we are looking for in our downtown commercial district as we try to make it a more family-friendly, sidewalk-friendly, pedestrian-friendly area. And once again, I do ask that council approve this ordinance.
I'll move it. It's been moved and seconded. As we said at the first reading, we very much appreciate the good work that you've done. It looks like not only have you incorporated the things that you mentioned, but you've also reorganized the ordinance itself so it appears clearer and more understandable. So we do appreciate that. Are there any additional council comments or questions? I think we've discussed this a couple times before. Are there any public comments on this ordinance at second reading? All right, seeing none. This is the second reading of the ordinance. Will the clerk please call the roll? Aye?
Aye.
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 The second reading, the ordinance passes at second reading.
And thank you so much for being so patient and waiting through those other items.
You all have a great evening.
It'll get a little bit longer. Okay, the next item is the resolution approving the community development block grant projects. And again, this is something that we have discussed before. I'm gonna turn to Bob. Is there any, we've had presentations on this before, anything else that we need to hear?
No, it's the same thing you've heard before.
Okay, this is the same thing we've heard before. It's been moved and seconded. Any council comments or questions? Any public comments on the ordinance, I'm sorry, the resolution? Any public comments on the resolution? Seeing none. The resolution is before the council. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution passes.
I have to abstain.
What?
I have to abstain because it's HUD money.
Okay, council member Clay is abstaining on the vote for potential conflict of interest, I guess, since you control the entire HUD budget.
I have nothing to do with CDPD, but it's in the ethics letter that I got, so...
You're being very careful. The next item is the second reading of the ordinance, mending the city code to require living wage. Move it.
I have a second.
Okay. Ruben?
Yes, I have a question on section A, B, C, D. It lists applicable federal or state program. Do we need to put in county there, or is that sort of...
No, the A, B, C, D of which now?
Aren't we looking at the living wage?
Right.
Or in the exemptions, sorry?
I'm sorry, okay, the exemptions?
Yeah. D, it talks about applicable federal or state program. Do we need to add county in there?
The question is whether we have to do applicable federal, state, or county program contract or grant requirement. Since we've let the city attorney go at this point.
Yeah, this was actually, I don't know that they, I probably know more about this than I think they do. It certainly probably wouldn't hurt to add it. I'm not familiar with any county programs that would mandate anything, but...
Was the template for this, the county program?
Yes.
And therefore, they wouldn't have put it in there because that wouldn't be...
Well, I also looked at some other ones. Very common language in those municipal, because generally, if there's gonna be any kind of prevailing requirement, it's gonna be a federal or state requirement, not at a county level. I certainly don't, if the council's concerned, I certainly don't think it would hurt anything to add it. If it's not applicable, then it just doesn't have any impact.
I forget who moved this.
I do.
Any objections? Council objections? Okay, without objection, we will add or county. Anything else?
I have another one.
Okay.
Under solicitation requirements, Part D, the last sentence concerns contractor who, you know, makes a false statement, fails to comply, et cetera. It says the loss, subject to loss of the contract and disqualification from future contracts. Is this forever?
As written, that would be the case. It doesn't have a timeframe on it. I mean, I think the question for the council is if you have someone who knowingly violates a living wage requirement that the vendor has committed to adhering to, is that someone you're interested in doing business with? I think if the council is open to doing that, you could certainly put a time limit in terms of the disqualification. I'm not a lawyer, but my reading of this is that basically they would be... I'm not a lawyer, but my reading of this is that basically they would be disqualified from doing business with the city.
And I assume that there would be an administrative issue if this, if this disqualification were time-limited, somebody would have to keep track of this.
Yeah, I mean, from a practical basis, but I think there, I would also add though, that we're going to have to maintain some type of list anyway because if it's, if they're barred in perpetuity, somehow there has to be a list of who those companies are.
So either way, it could work. Do you object to them being barred in perpetuity?
I'm not clear that that's a great idea. Seems like a very severe penalty. It would also lead to me, if I were in, if I were a contractor, you know, after 20 years had gone by and I decided I wanted to have another city contract, I'd probably change the name of my company so I could get a city contract. Maybe that's, maybe it's irrelevant, that's what contractors would do.
Yeah, you could certainly put a time period in there that you felt was punitive enough to discourage anyone from violating this.
Until there's a change in principles in the company.
Yeah.
One nice thing is we did add the, take a look at this, I forgot where it goes, that we're supposed to come back and look at this, review of the living wage.
Right, there is a new section at the very end, 7.08240, which is in response to, I think, a concern that was raised at first reading. As I had indicated at that time, I think it's important that we have a clear set of parameters that are setting forth who the living wage law would be applicable to, which is why I discourage the council from doing any type of indexing. I think there was a concern expressed by some members of the council that that could be reviewed periodically in consultation with the city attorney. What was added since first reading was that there would be a review by the council every three years, not only looking at the contract values, which I think is a specific issue, but also looking at any other parameters included in the proposed laws, such as exemptions and things of that nature.
I wasn't actually asking for a whole explanation of it, I was just noting that since we had that automatic review, if this turns out to be an issue, we can come back and do it then. So I'm happy to let this forever issue go until three years from now.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments on, for part of the council? Okay, are there any public comments on this ordinance? This is the second reading, the second and final reading of the ordinance. All right, seeing none, this is the second reading. Will the clerk please call the roll? Aye?
Right.
Aye.
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 All right.
The ordinance passes on second reading. The next item is the second reading of the ordinance regarding the first budget amendment for FY08. And I understand that, well, I know that the city manager has made some changes, do you want to sort of push?
Yeah, I would call to the council's attention that there was a revised version left at your places at the dais this evening, so there has been a change even since what was included in the packet, so I just wanted to call the council's attention to that.
It's also blue, though.
It is blue. There are basically three, three things that have essentially changed, there's a number of changes, but just to kind of encompass them in three broad categories. Since the agenda packet went out, the public works director advised me that as they were progressing with work on the Maple Avenue Bridge sidewalk, they found that more steel members had to be removed than originally planned, and there were some additional support beams that were recommended by the consulting engineer that changed the amount that we needed to appropriate from the unappropriated reserve for this capital project. So if you look under general fund transfers, number one, the, you'll see a highlight indicating that that amount has changed, it shifted by $9,500 from what was shown in the ordinance that the council considered at first reading. Also under transfers, you'll see a whole slew of transfers between the general government budget accounts. This is related to the reorganization plan that was discussed by the council on October 15th, and those changes would basically effectuate the budgetary transfers necessary to implement that plan. The third change, which is encompassed under both general fund revenues and general fund expenditures, has to do with the city's Bolt-by-Tree Sale Program. Since the council first considered this budget amendment, the public works director did notify me that there were a number of residents who kind of came in at the 11th hour basically to purchase trees under that program, which basically changed the amount of revenue that we would be receiving as well as the expenditures associated with that program.
So that's good for trees planted.
Correct. And broad categories, that's the changes. I also did want to just note, and my understanding is, at first reading, apparently there was a question about the balance that would be left in the unappropriated reserve after this budget amendment, if it was to be passed, and that is noted under the fiscal impact that if this budget amendment is approved, there would be approximately $289,000 left in the unappropriated reserve account.
Someone want to move this?
I'll move it.
Second. It's been moved in seconded, any questions? Bruce?
Just a comment that a couple of us went to a municipal budgeting work session at the MML conference last weekend, it was pointed out that all budget amendments require two-thirds approval, and I think that's something that we haven't necessarily been cognizant of, so...
But since all of ours pass unanimously, we're covering the two-thirds.
We are, but that is a requirement.
Thank you for that additional information, and I know you mentioned that to the city clerk who will do whatever needs to be done with that.
Probably put it in the circular pile.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, any public comments on this ordinance at second reading? All right, seeing none, this is the second reading, will the clerk please call the roll? Aye?
Aye.
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 The ordinance passes at second reading. The next item on the agenda is a resolution that would amend the employment agreement between the city and the city manager. We have, the city council talked about this.
No.
Okay. The amendment is that the employer, the city, will make an annual contribution equal to 5% of the city manager's gross-based salary to a 457 deferred compensation claim. That's basically the gist of this. Would someone like to?
Move the resolution?
Second. Okay. Are there any, council, sorry, it's getting kind of late, comments or questions? Are there any public comments on this? All right, seeing none, the resolution is before the council. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? The resolution passes. The next item is the second reading of the ordinance that revises the time of the council's meeting to receive certification of election results. This is part of the requirement that the day after the election, the council has to meet to receive the certified election results from the judges. We are moving it from 7:30 to 7:00 so that the council members have an opportunity to send a very important commemoration of one of our largest business associations. Would someone like to move this on second reading?
Move.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any council comments on this? Any public comments on the ordinance? All right, seeing none, this is the second reading of the ordinance, will the clerk please call the roll? Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
I guess I'll put a aye.
At this point, it doesn't matter, I think we'd best. The next and final item on the agenda is the second reading of the ordinance, appointing judges for the city election. And I note that the city clerk has managed to get one, two, three, four, five, six judges and only lose one, so we're ahead five there. So in addition to the members of the board of elections, so you're up to 23 at this point. Does someone want to move the ordinance?
Move.
Okay, one of those is a second, I guess.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any council comments on the ordinance? Any public comments on the ordinance? Since this is the second reading, will the clerk please call the roll? Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
The second reading of this ordinance passes. That was the last item on the agenda, and if there's nothing else, we're adjourned.